Well, Mike, are you ready to begin?
Yep, starting now.
All right, very good. Good afternoon, the time is now 12:50 PM and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Education regular meeting of February 9th, 2021 is reconvened. At point in the meeting where we do public participation. Marilyn, are there individuals who wish to address the board during today's meeting?
There are individuals who wish to address the board and let me quickly remind them of the rules. We have, do have some that are waiting in the lobby graciously joined us early to make this happen. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes to address the board and I will keep track of time. We will be strictly following the time limit so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. It's the practice of the board not to respond to comments during the public participation portion of the meeting. You may be contacted later. We will maintain an atmosphere of respect for all people and disrespecting anyone by name or otherwise will be asked to cease. And it, Mike, if you could let the first caller in?
Yes, someone should be in.
Yeah.
Hi caller. Hi, yes, this, we all, hi, this is Marilyn Schneider. If you, you will have three minutes to speak. I will be keeping track of time. If you could state your name and where you're from and begin your comments, we can carry on. Thank you.
You're welcome. My name is James Boyd and I am a resident of Ann Arbor with a son in the Ann Arbor Public School System. He also is a senior who plays on the hockey team. In Ann Arbor, instruction has been virtual all year. It has, of course, been a struggle for both students and teachers. Hockey has been the saving grace of my son's senior year. The team has been wearing masks and social distancing without complaint since they began last fall. They've had zero cases on their team. Statewide, the COVID testing program for fall sports had 99.8% negative results in 30,000 rapid tests. It's 99.8% negative. These results attest to the seriousness everyone associated with high school sports has given to safety. Last Thursday, Governor Whitmer and the Department of Health and Human Services released an order allowing the reopening of fall contact sports. Ann Arbor Public Schools was the only one of Michigan's 587 school districts that has failed to reopen. The AAPS concern for safety is clearly not based on facts, but is based on their unique failure to process the same information that every other school district in Michigan has. Our season is not shut down out of an abundance of caution. It is shut down by the shortcomings of the administration. It seems unlikely that your board can have much impact in the unfortunately short time available, but I do thank you for your time. Have a good day.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir. If you could admit the next caller, Mike? Do we have, do we have a caller there?
Uh, yes.
Hello, if you could state your name and the city you're from and then provide your comments, I will keep a three-minute timer. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. My name is Rita Simpson Vlock. I am calling from Ann Arbor. And I had several prepared comments about, I have, I have two children in the public schools here. A fourth grader and a seventh grader. Both of my children are, have special needs, including ADHD and other learning disabilities. And my fourth grader in particular is at very high risk of falling further behind. She began the fourth grade year starting out reading at a third grade level. Virtual schooling has been extremely difficult for her. We have had to hire a tutor to help her. Not that we have the extra money, we have had to borrow it from my mother. We don't have the privilege of having any relatives in the area that we can rely on. I am working full-time from home. My husband is actually a teacher, has been teaching full-time in person since, since the fall. I had a few prepared comments about how this is all very challenging for my fourth grader who has dyslexia and how it's been just devastating emotionally for our entire family. But actually, about an hour, a little over an hour ago, I received an email from my son's English teacher that I think speaks more to all the challenges. This came in today at 11:24. I was busy with some unusually time-sensitive work obligations. And my son is also, has a learning disability and attention issues. And the, the email says, "Hi, Andrew, I called on you a few times today and received no reply. At the end of class, everyone left but you. I asked if you had a question, then if you were there and received no reply. You were in class 20 minutes after everyone else left and did not communicate with me. You left without saying anything. It seems as if your attention might be on something other than class and schoolwork. I am also concerned that appears you have not done any of the work for your argumentative essay. I have no evidence of work for the following assignments. Thesis Statement, January 29th. Research Notes, February 2nd. Graphic Organizers, February 5th. This work builds, all builds on the previous assignments. If assignments are not completed as we go, it will quickly become overwhelming. Please let me know how I can help you with this assignment. As I've said before, I know this is hard and virtual school is not ideal, but we really need you. We need you to show up. We need you to put some effort into school. We need you to participate. We will eventually go back to the building and we want you to be ready when we do." And what I have to say is, he needs in-person schooling. My son is not the problem here. I am sitting there in the same room with him, trying to do my work, trying to accommodate him by saying, "Are you on class now? Are you doing your work? Are you, you know?" And he's getting angry at me because he doesn't want me to be constantly looking over his shoulder. But guess what? He's doing what's all-
I'm sorry, your time is up. I appreciate your-
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Caller, if you'll state your name and where you're from, I will keep a three-minute timer. Thank you for calling in.
I, I'm not quite sure.
Hello, caller?
Hello, can you hear me?
I can. Please state your name and the, and the city you're from.
Okay, my name is Constance Esquiar. I live in Ann Arbor. I have five kids. One is a freshman, a seventh grader, a fifth grader, and I have twins. They, they just start kindergarten this year. They are all in Ann Arbor Public School. So, since March last year, my kids don't have any in-person class. So my sixth grader has an IEP. He has learning disability. He has particularly struggled in the absence of in-class instruction. He was already lagging academically before the pandemic. Now he is even further behind. I am really worried because he's supposed to go to middle school next year. For my five-year-old twins, the, the situation is not so good. One is not doing so bad, but I have to fight every day with the other one. Because since Christmas break, he does not want anymore to be on the iPad and he's tired. I feel that getting such young kids hooked to technology is unfair. My seventh grader is suffering emotionally because of the lack of relationships. My older son is a freshman at Huron High School. As it is his first year in high school, he doesn't know, not, he does not know his classmates. So he does not have any connection with the other high schoolers. He will have to choose his classes for next year, but it will be another challenge for him because the online communication with the teacher counselors is complicated. We already had the experience last year when he had to choose his electives. So we know exactly how complicated it is online. I support my kids every day. I try to do my best. It is hard to see this situation and it is not fair. Our kids deserve to have a regular learning at school. They are our future and they don't deserve this ill-learning. They have the right to get an appropriate learning. This is an universal right and this is the basis of the development of any nation. That's why today I would comment this kind of thing in front of you. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. May I have the next caller, please?
Hello, this is Lena Kaufman from Ann Arbor.
Please, please continue, Ms. Kaufman.
Hi, thank you. I'm speaking to you today on behalf of Ann Arbor Reasonable Return. And we're a group of parents and community members in the Ann Arbor Public Schools District. We're concerned because no child in Ann Arbor Public Schools has seen the inside of a classroom since March of last year. Not even special education students, English language learners, or our youngest learners.
Please continue, Ms. Kaufman.
Meanwhile, districts all around us are reopening and we are resuming high school sports. Ann Arbor Public Schools is one of the most well-resourced districts in the state. In 2019, voters passed a $1 billion facilities bond. Superintendent Janice Swift says the district has a two-month supply of PPE stockpiled. In November, she and the Executive Director of Capital Projects said that the buildings were ready to reopen and were more prepared than many surrounding districts. The Ann Arbor Medical Community has petitioned the district three times with research and guidance. This week, nearly 400 local physicians and psychiatrists added their names to a letter calling on the district to meet the goal of Governor Whitmer to offer an in-person learning option for all students by March 1st. Our district has not surveyed the community regarding preferences for in-person learning since June. At that time, 91% of the family surveyed indicated they were ready to return to a blended or hybrid model of learning. Ann Arbor Public Schools has repeatedly lost our trust by setting unattainable metrics for return, moving goalposts, and not sharing what in, what independent experts, if any, they are consulting in setting the metrics for return. We're running out of time to allow students an in-person option this year. Meanwhile, the learning loss gap widens and families with means are leaving our district. Please encourage all Michigan school districts to offer in-person learning, especially if they're as well-prepared as Ann Arbor is to do so safely. Please set state metrics and guidelines on reopening that are uniform and consistent. Local control doesn't work when local leaders lack transparency, communication, and refuse to listen to expert guidance. Please help us get our kids back in school. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. May I have the next caller, please? Caller, are you on the line? Hello, if you can please state your name and where you're from, I will keep a three-minute timer. Thank you for calling in.
Hello, my name is Yuri Goykman. I'm a parent of a second grader in Ann Arbor Public Schools. Thank you very much for taking my call. Can you hear me well?
I can, yes. Please continue.
Yes. So I would like to take a few minutes to bring your attention to the unfortunate situation with a lack of clear in-person learning prospects for the Ann Arbor Public Schools students for the foreseeable future. Back in the summer, APS sent out a survey to parents regarding their preference for in-person or virtual school. While the school year was going to start virtual, the implication was Ann Arbor would take reasonable steps to offer in-person instruction soon. Then Ann Arbor Public Schools released their metrics for them to even consider in-person school. And it became apparent that they have no intention of offering any, anything but the virtual school for the foreseeable future. For example, one of the metric schools for the cases to drop to as low as seven per million people, which would translate to just two or three cases in the entire Washington County. A standard that's not even our county health department deemed possible to meet. Since children are not eligible for the vaccine, there are vaccine shortages and vaccine hesitancy in the community. It may take years and years to meet this standard while thousands and thousands of children are falling more and more behind in virtual schools. While many surrounding school districts opened in the fall, there was a growing but limited evidence that schools, especially elementary schools, could be safely conducted with appropriate levels of precaution. Now the science is settled with a number of studies concluding that the proper, with proper level of precaution, schools are safe. The experts at the CDC, FDA, American Pediatric Station, Dr. Fauci, as well as countless infectious disease specialists, including many in our community, many other subject matter experts came up in support for offering an in-person option for the families that need it. Yet, Ann Arbor Public Schools continues to deny science and seems to be guided by irrational fear and politics. Governor Whitmer set the goal of opening schools by March 1st and moved teachers in front of many essential and in-person workers like me, who have been working in person throughout the pandemic, because she understands the importance of in-person school for many families. Yet, despite being one of the best-funded districts in the state, Ann Arbor Public Schools continue to make excuses and moving goalposts of why they can go back to work. I believe APS is the only district in Washington County and possibly the state that has not set a firm start date for the return of in-person school. Currently, in-person school is safely conducted in nearby districts, preschools, as well as in all Ann Arbor private schools. What makes Ann Arbor stand out? It's not the resources, since APS is one of the best-funded districts and it has more money to spend on safety than most nearby districts. It's not, it has nothing to do with COVID, since nearby districts and private schools are dealing with the same level of community spread.
Sir, I'm sorry, your three, sir, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you very much for taking my comments.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, may I have the next caller, please?
Hello, my name is Kim Monroe. I'm a pediatrician in Michigan. Good afternoon, State of Michigan Board of Education and Dr. Rice. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I am here to discuss the letter signed by over 350 Ann Arbor-area physicians and psychologists in support of Governor Whitmer's timeline for offering a face-to-face learning option for all students by March 1st. APS students have only been offered a remote learning option since March of 2020. Ten months later, the district is only beginning to finalize plans to start hybrid in-person teaching. APS stands alone in our county in its acknowledgement that it will not meet the March 1st goal, stating a projected start date of sometime in early March for the youngest students. However, they have recently indicated a lack of commitment to that goal. Every other district in Washington County has set a date for reopening prior to March 1st, with most districts already offered, offering in-person teaching this year. I would now like to share some other highlights from the letter. Though we support vaccination of all school personnel, we concur with Governor Whitmer that reopening should not wait on vaccination progress. We are concerned that children with IEPs have not all been receiving the therapies they need. Special education teachers are being prioritized for vaccination, yet an in-person start date remains to be set for these children. National and international organizations, as well as influential public health officials, have also spoken out in favor of returning children to in-person school due to the continued social, emotional, developmental, and educational harms of virtual learning. These organizations include the American Academy of Pediatrics, CDC, WHO, UNICEF, UNESCO, and Dr. Fauci have taken the position that the goal should be to safely return children to school as soon as possible. The letter ends with the following. "We, the undersigned, are physicians and psychologists. We are deeply troubled by the harmful impact of delayed school reopening on our community. We strongly urge you to modify the APS return to school plans to align with Governor Whitmer's recommendations and have all students who choose in-person options allowed back in the buildings by March 1st. We are more than happy to provide any assistance in meeting the goal. Thank you."
Thank you for providing your comments. Um, I should have reminded people in this appointment when we started, please do not admit anyone from the lobby. Mike Flamigno is controlling that from behind the scenes. I think it's maybe contributing to some of the feedback we're getting. Do we still have a caller on the line that has not yet spoken?
I believe so.
Okay. If you could please state your name and where you're from, then we can proceed with your public comment.
Okay, thank you. Greetings, everyone. My name is Nathan Ma. I'm a parent of a first grader in Oakhamus, along with two younger children, including a baby who was born last spring on the day the pandemic was declared. I'm speaking today to ask this board to do whatever it can to encourage districts across the state to offer in-person options as quickly as possible and as fully as possible, according to medical evidence and guidance from health officials. As you may know, Oakhamus has been entirely online in its programming since last March when students were sent home. I would like to share my own experiences as a parent of a special needs first grader trying to learn online this fall. My daughter is on the autism spectrum, but luckily she's able to be in a general education classroom. She's very bright, but she needs the support of a one-to-one paraprof who sits with her to keep her on task and help her interpret direction. The entire fall semester was a loss for her because this support was now on a Zoom call. She has never shared well with screens and she can't attend to one for more than 30 or 40 minutes. She can't even sit through an entire movie, let alone a day at school. For about a month, we tried our best to work with the online structure that our district provided, but her, her behavior became steadily worse, to the point where she was throwing tantrums and chewing on her toys like she did when she was a toddler. By October, we worked with the district to minimize screen time and do what we could offline instead. And they also agreed that finding in-home support for us was important, but, and this is very significant, they were not allowed to use any current employees who were under existing bargaining agreements. Our special ed director had to find a private company to provide services. So long story short, it was mid-December before someone was in our home to help develop a plan. And then we were informed that that company was going out of business at the end of the year, leaving us at square one. In January, the district offered to let us use anyone we could find. And we were very fortunate to have a teacher friend who had just moved from another state, but she wasn't already working. She's been coming for a couple hours a day for about three weeks now, and my daughter is finally learning again. As you can tell, our district administration was extremely supportive, as far as it could be, but the online format and the hoops required made it virtually impossible to get it when she needed it. In November, I began organizing Oakhamus parents who wanted an in-person option for their district, so I've heard many, many stories from parents who have pulled their kids out to homeschool, utilized schools of choice, or even moved to other districts with in-person options. Many others would, but they don't have the resources to do anything but muddle through as best they can. The path our district took clearly did not provide the best education experiences for a significant number of our families. Even now, our plan date is March 8th for elementary and March 15th for higher grades past the governor's target. Further, our board is still discussing things as if those dates may get pushed back until our teachers are fully vaccinated, outside the guidance of health, health experts and other officials. At our board meeting last night, the public comments were dominated by teachers and union officials expressing reluctance to return in person, with one teacher even saying out loud that if you try to return on our planned schedule, we should get our HR department ready because we'll have a lot of openings to fill. I've been hearing about quote-unquote staffing issues through the grapevine since September, but I had, I had not heard that said out loud until now. I don't begrudge the teachers their voice and they have every right to advocate for themselves. They already have representation in this discussion. We, parents, also need a voice. Our board is elected by our community to be that voice, but it has been a challenge to hear our voice in their discussions. I would ask this state board to be a strong voice for parents and student needs regarding their education. Is that my timer?
Yes, thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
There's still another person who is, has joined us, who has not yet provided public comment that has already been admitted? Hello?
Yes, I'm here, Gina Luster.
Hi Gina Luster, can you please let us know where you're from and then go ahead and provide your comments?
Uh, yes, Gina Luster, I'm a resident of the city of Flint, Michigan. I live in the hot zone for A504. And my question is, I have a 12-year-old daughter. I've taken her out of public school and charter schools and she's now in a private Catholic school. And the building is very old. As you could imagine, it's a church and school, St. John's Beanie. I'll just put that out there. But my question is, they took the kids out of school and they were doing face-to-face with the teachers daily, or at least three times a week, and that was working back last year in the late spring. But the new school year, now my daughter is being sent assignments and steps to finish and she gets like a progress report weekly, because I set that up with the teacher, but no real face-to-face time. And I think that if we could somehow find a way to get, I know some teachers have to be in, in class because some students are going in face-to-face, but if we can also get a set of teachers to strictly dedicate their time to the students who are at home, we could make this a lot more successful than it is. Because, yes, our students that are at home are falling behind. I see it. I'm not a teacher. You know, that's not my profession. But I've tried to get her tutoring and it's just, they need to see a face. They need to see that someone is there that cares about what's going on. They need to be able to ask, "How do I do this? Am I doing this right? Am I doing this wrong?" Not just setting them out there. I'm from Flint, there was a school here called the School of Choice. That's where the kind of the pregnant girls went, the bad people went who were falling behind. And they would just give you your work and say, "If you can get all this done, you will graduate by this date." But at the end of the day, that didn't work out. A lot of those students are walking the streets of Flint right now and they have ten babies and they're on welfare. That didn't work out. So that's just my comment and my concern. And hopefully we can all work together to make this happen and do right by the students and especially the Flint kids. And my heart goes out to Birmingham and all those other districts. But it is disheartening for me to be on the line and not hear Flint be mentioned by only Dr. Pamela Pew, who is from Saginaw. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Eli, are you there?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes, if you could please state your full name and the city you're from and then provide your comments, that'd be great. Go ahead.
Okay. I live in Pittsfield Township. My children, our first grader is six and a fifth grader is 10, are in Ann Arbor Public Schools. And I just want to say, I understand that there's a lot of fear out there from teachers. I think a lot of it is misplaced fear, but I understand the fear. And I certainly understand that there are some kids and teachers who are in high-risk categories. But I think the science is pretty much definitive at this point that, and as the governor has said and as over 500 physicians and doctors and experts just in Ann Arbor alone have now said, that with proper mitigation procedures, school can open in-person safely. It's being done, it's been done, and there's no reason it can't be done other than just fear. And, and still in our school district, I mean, we have all the mitigation strategies in place and we've got everything that, you know, more hard-hit districts don't have and they still refuse to open up. And, you know, our, our fifth grader is doing okay. Our first grader, we've essentially given up on his, on his, on his online school and just basically started homeschooling him, which, and paying for tutors to come over. And that's worked wonders with him. He's, he has caught up, but at considerable expense to us. And, you know, we're willing to make that sacrifice for him. But I, I know of many, many families and many parents who cannot make that same sacrifice. They can't find three, four extra hours in the day to do their kids homeschooling. They can't find $300, $400, $500, you know, a month, which is what we pay for tutors. All the private schools are full and have waiting lists. All the Catholic schools are full and have waiting lists and they're expensive too. And I feel like, you know, these people, these families, they're totally invisible. They're treated like human garbage. They're just thrown out and told, "Oh, well, you're on your own. Figure something out on your own." There's been no help, there's been no willingness to creatively problem-solve, hold classes outside, hold classes in auditoriums for maximum, you know, spacing. Nothing, even for the most vulnerable students. It's just shut it all down and give everyone an iPad and tell everyone just to do apps. And I think this is a real big problem. It's not just all the kids who are going to be so far behind their peers. And the research tells us that once kids fall this far behind, especially younger kids, they usually don't catch up. Everybody says kids are resilient and they've got all this time to catch up. The research says only the, the exceptional, you know, outlier kid catches up. The research says only the exceptional, you know, outlier kid catches up. But it's even more dangerous for public schools. I mean, we are big supporters of public schools, and we voted for that millage to give our district a billion dollars. But it's, it's, the reality is, we're not going to vote for that stuff anymore. And a lot of, like, very liberal parents that I've talked to never thought they would be saying the things that we're all saying to each other, which is, we want schools of choice. We want vouchers. We want, you know, we want charter schools now, and we don't, we're not going to vote for any more taxes for, for the schools. So, I know there's not a lot you can do, but anything you could do would be appreciated. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, the next caller, please? Hello, if you could please state your name, where you're from, and then begin your three minutes of public comment, we would appreciate it. Thank you for calling.
Okay, my name is Nikki Green, and I am from Ann Arbor. We have two children who attend Ann Arbor School District. We've grown frustrated with our superintendent and the Board of Education's response to getting children back to in-person schooling, especially after Governor Whitmer's March 1st objective was set. Hundreds of local doctors, pediatricians, and specialists have signed a letter, the second one since November 2020, recommending the return to in-person school, yet Ann Arbor Public Schools pays no attention to the medical expertise being put forth. The Ann Arbor Public Schools' metrics for return have been criticized by our own Washtenaw County Health Department as being nearly impossible to achieve. Not once has the superintendent or Board of Education here cited school-specific data about school transmission, but only focuses on the community data and general numbers of cases. Currently, a third of the cases in Washtenaw County are from U of M college students. The Ann Arbor Public Schools lacks transparency with its parents and constituents. One great example of this is the fact that they have failed to survey the parents for what they want for their children in terms of returning to school or remaining 100% virtual. They claim that no BIPOC families want to return, yet this is based on anecdotal evidence at best. They claim to be very interested in equity, and I speak as a minority family, but their paternalistic methods are not helping the community. We need fact-based, informed evidence of what families want. My son's third grade experience is telling. Since first grade, he has scored in the 99th percentile for math on the NWEA test and in the 95th percentile for reading, yet after one semester of 100% virtual, he has fallen to 84% in math and 87% in reading. This is reflective of the fact that virtual learning is not conducive to productive learning for many students. Please help the AAPS community put pressure on the superintendent and the Board of Education to set a date for our children to return to in-person learning, not only for the hybrid in the spring, but for full-time in-person in the fall of 2021. Our children's education and mental health is truly suffering. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone in the lobby that may be muted right now who has not had the opportunity to provide public comment? Speak now, please, or this will conclude public comment. Anybody in the lobby who has not had the opportunity? Okay, thank you. This concludes public comment. We appreciate you calling in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much to all those that have presented, and thank you to Marilyn Schneider for navigating that space with our public comment parents this afternoon. We appreciate everyone who's taken the time out of their busy schedules to speak with us today. The next agenda item is presentation by the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. We're pleased to welcome Dr. Natasha Bagdisarian, Senior Public Health Physician from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. She will share information regarding mitigation strategies to keep children safe in schools. This is an informational presentation. It does not require board action. Please note that Dr. Bagdisarian has another commitment at 2:00 PM. Dr. Bagdisarian, welcome.
Thank you so much for having me. I'm really pleased to be here today and speaking to your members. I have a few slides to share, so I'll go ahead and do that. Okay, hopefully you can see my slides okay. So, I'll talk a little bit about some of the strategies designed to keep students and teachers and other school staff safe as we move towards this goal of reopening schools, and maybe address some of the things that your callers brought up in some of their public comments as well. So, what I'll do is I'll talk a little bit about the guidance, the new guidance that we've issued. So, there is a very scaled-down version of the mitigation strategy guidance that was initially released earlier in the year, earlier in 2020, and now what we've tried to do is distill it to the very most important components. So, I'll talk about some of those risk mitigation strategies, and then I'll touch upon vaccination and testing as well. So, in terms of the risk mitigation strategies, we've really tried to highlight some of the ones that remain most important after everything that we have learned throughout the pandemic. So, cohorting, personal protective equipment, hand hygiene, not a lot new there, but really highlighting the importance of these measures. So, cohorting, for example, we're talking about keeping groups of students together throughout the day and avoiding mixing as much as we can to prevent spread from occurring if there are isolated cases. The personal protective equipment, we now understand that masks are the single most important piece that can be used to keep transmission from occurring, and we know that cloth masks can work very well, but it's really best if they're multi-layered, and that if there's additional risk and people are wanting some additional protection, that eye covering is really a great strategy to provide an extra level of protection. And hand hygiene, we've known from the beginning that this has been important. We're also really understanding more as this pandemic has progressed about spacing and movement within classrooms and within other educational settings. And we really believe that six feet of distance is optimal, wherever that can be achieved. And we know that this can't be achieved in all classroom settings, and that some classrooms have been using smaller distances when they're unable to meet six, six feet of distance. And we know that schools have also been using other strategies as well, including the use of barriers and things like that. And we believe that these are all tools. One of the things I'd like to stress with these mitigation strategies is that no single mitigation strategy is going to prevent spread alone. These all have to be layered on. And so, the more layers of protection that we're providing to educators and to students, the lower the risk of transmission. So, six feet is best, and if a school district needs to reduce classroom density, then hybrid models are one way that classroom density can be reduced. Again, the more people who are coming together in smaller spaces, the greater that risk of transmission. We also have a significant portion in here about ventilation, and ventilation was something that was not really stressed early on in the pandemic. The thought was that the virus that causes COVID-19, the SARS-CoV-2 virus, was mostly spread through larger droplets, and that if you kept people far apart, there would not be any spread. We now understand that there are smaller particles that also contribute to spread, and those are aerosols. And so, the only way to combat both droplet spread and aerosol spread is to use all of these mitigation strategies, layered one on top of each other. So, a mask prevents some of the largest droplets from leaving a person's mouth. The distance allows for some of those bigger droplets to fall to the ground if they do evade the mask, and then really good ventilation systems are helpful with some of those smaller particles, the aerosols, and getting them filtered out of the air. And so, we do have resources listed here where schools can work with Eagle to provide upgrades to HTRAC systems and improve ventilation wherever possible. As soon as the weather gets warmer, opening windows and opening doors will be another strategy that can be used. I wanted to talk a little bit about the testing component of this strategy as well. And again, testing is not something that on its own is going to stop spread. Testing is just one additional tool that we feel is a way for students and for educators to have an extra level of protection, an extra level of early detection of cases, and just another tool in the toolkit. And so, we've written here in the guidance that testing is not a requirement for schools to return to in-person learning, and testing would always be offered on a voluntary basis. It's never something that we want to force someone to engage in. This would all be voluntary. And for educators in particular, I think that testing is, is one way for them to feel reassured that while they are going out into this public-facing job, even though they're taking all the mitigation measures, that by having regular, ongoing testing, they can feel assured that they're not taking COVID back to their families. I'll talk a little bit about the school sports pilot first, just to talk about what we've learned. And there have been some reports about this in the press that may not really be interpreting our data accurately. So, I'll just tell you a little bit about what we think the sports testing pilot showed us. So, in the fall, as I'm sure many of you have heard, we offered a program to, for student athletes to be able to complete their football, swimming and diving, and volleyball seasons. So, this were for essentially playoff games and state finals. We had 7,000 participants in 200 schools, and testing was really fast. So, one of the things that we showed is that it was feasible to conduct a testing, like, a testing program like this in schools. So, we provided the Binax antigen cards to schools, and I'll show you what they look like. This is what they look like here. So, it's just a very simple card, and there's a swab that goes inside the card, so people can swab their own noses, apply the material inside the card, and then just apply a few drops of liquid, and the results show up either as a single line or two lines, very much like a home pregnancy test. So, we showed school staff how to use the card, and using this really simple technology, you don't need a healthcare provider to run the test for you. School staff were testing up to 80 people an hour with very small teams of four. So, the first thing we showed is that testing in a school setting was feasible. The second thing we wanted to look at is, was it useful? Did it give us any useful information? Was this helpful for the schools who participated? And one of the things that you may have seen in the press is that the vast majority of tests were negative, so more than 99% of tests were negative. However, while that is true, the key point here is that we actually excluded everyone who was symptomatic or close contact of COVID-19. So, anyone who was high-risk at all could not participate in this program. We were testing people who were very, very low-risk, and we were actually testing them multiple times. They were getting tested three times a week. And because of this very strict testing program, we identified 69 confirmed cases of COVID-19 in people who had no symptoms. So, that's 69 potential outbreaks that we prevented. And so, what we found with this testing program is that asymptomatic testing in a school setting, it's feasible and it's helpful. So, this is what the card looks like. For those of you who couldn't really see on my screen, it's just a little cardboard, a little cardboard square, and then some drops of liquid. This is the swab that people can use to swab their own nose. It's not the swab that goes all the way up here. It just stays in the lower portion of the nose, and the results are either one line or two lines. And this testing is being offered to all teachers, to all educators, so anyone who engages in face-to-face interaction with students on a weekly basis. And so far, we have about 300 schools, sorry, 391 schools who are participating, and we've received about 3,000 test results so far, and we'll let you know how it goes as this rolls out. The other part that I wanted to address is vaccination. And I know that teachers are excited to get vaccinated and want to get vaccinated, and this is definitely part of that whole mitigation strategy package. We want teachers to feel protected and to feel safe. And teachers are eligible here in Category 1B to receive COVID-19 vaccination. However, I will say that I, again, don't think that vaccination, and this is in accordance with CDC and national guidance, that we don't feel that vaccination is necessary or required for in-person learning to occur. Again, we're layering on those safety nets so that we have our mitigation strategies upfront, then we have testing strategies on top of that, and vaccination is an additional level of protection to prevent outbreaks from happening. If anyone has questions, I'm happy to take questions now, and I will say that this is our school guidance website here, and you can scan this code as well. Go to our website, and there's lots of materials available publicly to find out more about school guidance, about testing, and about vaccination. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bagdisarian. We appreciate not only your presentation today, but your leadership as well. We have a question from Mr. McMillan, and then one from President Ulbricht. Mr. McMillan?
Yeah, thank you, doctor. I just wanted to make sure that, would you acknowledge, and I'm having a hard time getting some people to acknowledge, the CDC, I'm looking at their website right now, and it says, "The risk of complications for healthy children is higher for flu compared to COVID-19." And that's just a statement on the CDC website. Are you familiar with that, and do you acknowledge that that is on the CDC website?
I would have to take a look to see if that specific statement is on the website.
Are you serious?
Yeah, I don't have the entire CDC website.
I'm sorry, I missed. Was there a follow-up, Mr. McMillan?
No, it's just, I mean, the acknowledgement of some facts, but the not acknowledgement of others is just, it's a farce.
Okay. Dr. Ulbricht, and then Dr. Pugh.
Thank you so much for being with us today, and I apologize for that. The, I read recently that there was a survey done of Michigan educators where they said 90% are interested in receiving the vaccine. Do you know at this point what percentage of educators have received the vaccine, and then what timeline are we looking at for educators to have the option? I know they have the option right now, but I also know that vaccine distribution is a potential issue as well. So, what is the timeline we're looking at for that?
So, absolutely. While educators are eligible, we acknowledge that there are not enough doses for everyone who's eligible to receive the vaccine at this time. And a lot of that is details being worked out with federal agencies, with increasing production of vaccine, and as more vaccine gets to our state, we'll have more locations available for people to receive vaccines, and we'll be able to roll out more vaccinations to those eligible and to those high-risk targeted groups. But unfortunately, I don't have a whole lot more in terms of specifics for you right now.
Dr. Ulbricht, follow-up?
No, but I wanted to give Brandy an opportunity to speak, and if she wanted to add anything to that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So, in that same survey, President Ulbrich, it indicated that two-thirds of all educators have either had one dose, two doses, or are currently scheduled for an appointment for their first dose. So, that's where we are right now on that specific question. I just also want to acknowledge that vaccination is, is one mitigation strategy, but the guidance that Dr. Bagdisarian outlined specifically includes a sentence that, that says vaccinations are not a prerequisite for returning to in-person learning, that that doesn't necessarily have to be done first before in-person learning happens when you have all of the other mitigation strategies, including universal facial coverings, distancing, ventilation, et cetera. But that's what we're, we're looking at, is about two-thirds, either, you know, totally vaccinated, have had their first dose, or currently have a scheduled appointment.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Johnson. Dr. Pugh?
Thank you for coming in for your presentation, and I'm going to try to go through my questions and tease out those that have already been asked. I guess, my first question, you gave a little bit of information on testing. What do you feel, how are you keeping up with contact tracing? And I guess I'll add to that, like, what has been the composition or the demographics of those schools where you have done testing? of those schools where you have done testing?
Sure, happy to answer the first part of your question first. In terms of contact tracing, that, a lot of that is being led by the local health departments. And so they are working closely with the schools who have these testing, or who had sports testing programs, so working very closely with that to assist with contact tracing. And that will continue as we are rolling out testing for educators. In terms of the demographics, I actually do have that data. Hold on, let me see if I can pull that up. Are you speaking specifically about the sports pilot?
Either one of the pilots, because it seemed like there were two different pilots you talked about.
So the sports testing pilot is completed. And so we have a little bit more data on that. Sorry, I think it'll take me a second to pull the data up on the demographics. So I don't have it readily at hand. In terms of the schools, so we've opened it up to all educators statewide. And it's a little bit of a slow roll. So schools are not required to start on a specific date. They can join us when they feel ready and able. So right now, we have almost 400 schools who have joined us. And we're going to, you know, we're encouraging more and more schools to join in. So I won't have that data until I think we're further underway with the project.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Bagdusarian, the list of schools that are participating, is that published on the website? Or if not, we can certainly get it to the State Board of Education, that list of 391 schools. Keep in mind, obviously, that the, those that are participating in the testing are those that are back in person. So school districts that have not yet gone back in person, which as Dr. Rice mentioned earlier, are disproportionately urban and suburban schools, are not as well represented in the 391 schools. So it's a bit of a chicken and egg. And then, sorry, Cassandra, President Ulbricht, I just remembered one other thing that I forgot to mention when I was talking about the vaccination and that, you know, that number that I shared, Michigan is doing much, much better than other states in terms of vaccinating their educators. So while we still have a long ways to go, and we are very committed to getting vaccinations to educators as quickly as possible, compared to other states, you know, we're doing better. And I think that reflects the fact that the governor's office made the determination to prioritize educators at the very top of this first 1B distribution release, whereas other states did not necessarily make that same decision.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Dr. Pugh, back to you.
Yeah, thank you. So wow, okay, bringing that up, Ms. Johnson gives me some other thoughts as far as the schools that are not currently in session and the conversation that we had in Dr. Rice's opening response. And my reason for asking that question, I asked the question, doctor, if, what percentage of children, or do, or can we break down those districts where predominantly black children are attending, or those predominantly black districts that are not in session? And the reason why I ask that question, because the national data right now shows that 78% of those who have adverse outcomes, most adverse outcomes are children of color, 78%. I looked at the latest data here in Michigan as it relates to the multi-inflammatory syndrome, and 41% of those children who have developed that are African-American children. So when we look at the adverse outcomes, and if we're not looking at those children when we're making these decisions, it's a huge concern to me. I think, you know, even as we looked at that study in Wisconsin, that was a study where 1% of the population was African-American, 1%. And this is the CDC study of Wood County. So 1% was, that the CDC is referencing when they make the discussions about we can go back to school. 1% African-American, 55,000 is the average median income, and then 10% low-income. And it's a pretty rural area. So I'm concerned, just as you spoke of the study with the schools and the athletes being tested, that we're not getting the full picture when we have these conversations around what we're studying. And that coupled with the conversation that we had earlier today around the inequities with environment is deeply concerning to me. I will, I'll just keep going. The other thing that's concerning to me is that until May and June, we should be greatly concerned with the variants of the virus and not knowing what impact that's going to have. And if we have any resistance towards that, even those variants, even with the vaccine, I'm concerned about when we talk about definition of school outbreak, what that means. I'm concerned that when we look at the school, when we look at what we're seeing in the schools and the in-school outbreaks, those children are masked up. When they go home, what happens there in the home? Should they, can everybody in the home wear masks now that the children are wearing a mask? I was really happy to see the 70% decline in hospitalizations as well, or in cases as a result of the shutdown of the high school and the in-person dining. And now we're opening back up with children potentially going back to school. And what's that going to mean? Cassandra brought up the timeline, the timeline for the vaccine. So we're saying now that teachers don't need to be vaccinated. And I guess my question would be, well, first of all, I think that they should be. But, and then the timeline that it takes for them to get off that waiting list, get the vaccine, get the second dose 21, 28 days later, and then the two weeks for it to actually take effect. So those are all of my thoughts for now. And if you could speak to any of those, hopefully you can remember.
I will try.
Right, and the reality is, is that, you know, we'll do what we can do now. And if we need to share additional questions with you, we'll do that. We want to be solicitous of the need of board members to get answers, but also solicitous of your schedule as well. So your reflections, yep?
Yeah. I completely understand where you're coming from. And, you know, this is a, it's a time of great anxiety for all of us, and it's a time of a lot of unknowns. So I completely understand where you're coming from. And yes, in terms of the variant, this is a time of risk. But the strategies that we have to prevent transmission are the same strategies. We don't have anything new or anything that is more effective right now. It's essentially doubling down on those same risk mitigation strategies. So it's the masking, the distancing, you know, not having large groups of people together as much as possible, so reducing density and ventilation. So the strategies, unfortunately, we don't have anything new and better, even though the virus has, you know, gone to version 2.0. So it's understanding that. But it's taking the same strategies that we've had, paring them down to say, these are the ones that are the most helpful. So if you remember, early on in the pandemic, there was a lot of attention to disinfection and cleaning surfaces. And now we know where we can get the most bang for our buck in terms of stopping spread with masking and distancing and ventilation. So it's refining down to what really, really works, and then adding on those other pieces. So even though we know that not all educators are vaccinated yet, and the hope, I agree with you, is to get everyone vaccinated, the goal remains the same. We need to get as many shots in arms as possible. But we're also hoping that with some level of vaccination in the community and in schools, and then on top of that, this testing piece, that we can reduce transmission to a degree where some of the concerns you talk about, what happens when the kids go home? Are they going to be masking around their families? Things like that, that we don't need to worry about those pieces so much because we're preventing transmission from occurring in schools. So the goal is to layer on as many protections as we can, one on top of each other, to stop the school from being a place where transmission is occurring. And in fact, what we have seen, looking at the data and looking at outbreaks, is transmission, the highest risk of transmission is when people are congregating in places that are far more social. So it's where people are getting together, removing their masks, and having, you know, physical contact, for example. So there have been, in the course of this pandemic, there have been a lot of outbreaks in weddings, and in funerals, and in family gatherings. And those are the types of places where people are letting down their guard, taking off their masks, and, you know, hugging each other and getting really close with each other. Schools have been the one place where there is more ability to follow the rules. And there's more accountability. You're not there to, you're not there for the same purposes. You're not there to hug each other and be close to each other. The goal is to be there to learn. So that's some of our attempt in coming up with all of these risk mitigation strategies. So I worry more about the social gatherings being the place where transmission occurs, and then disease getting introduced into schools. And then the other piece that you've mentioned is trying to get information on the breakdown of where testing is happening. And Brandy is absolutely right. We can get you a list of schools who are participating. It's open enrollment, so I'm hoping that those numbers will go up. And we're also going to engage with some, with specific school districts in socially vulnerable areas as well. So far, I can tell you, and this is really, really preliminary data, so far, the educator testing, when we look at the racial breakdown, sorry, it is 68% white, 11% black, 16% unknown. So this is really, really preliminary because the educator testing started, you know, really not so long ago, and schools are, schools have not been, the reporting is still a little bit of an issue. So I think the data will get better as we go along. But the goal is to, exactly as you're talking about, is to really get testing into some of these areas that are socially vulnerable.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bagdusarian. Dr. Pugh, a follow-up, or are we good for the moment?
Yeah, I think we're good for the moment. I think that there's a lot of back and forth that we could have. I think that they're just our way, I mean, we talk about unknowns. I think one of the biggest unknowns is these disparities. I mean, especially when we see the children who are having the most adverse impact as a result, the fact that children have not been tested at the rates of the rest of the population, African-Americans, people of BIPOC, people of color, black, brown communities, the vaccinations, we're not seeing that that's occurring in those communities. And we do have a lot of, I think, what has helped us is the fact that these communities are the communities that have not seen a lot of movement as it relates to children. So we don't have a clear picture on what would happen if the doors are open and these children begin to move back and forth. Children are more likely to be asymptomatic while they're in an environment in the schools and they're wearing a mask, them going home, that's something totally different. The schools, when we talk about ventilation and other issues in the schools, we know in Detroit, we just had the lawsuit that was related to the building conditions. So when we look at those schools, opening windows is not a possibility in many of these schools that have sealed the windows shut. The ventilation systems have been a problem for a long time. So there are lots of unknowns as we talk about, you know, applying the research that we have, generalizing, making it generalizable. It's difficult to do.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pugh. Other board members, questions or comments? Questions or comments? Hearing none. If there are other questions, we want to be solicitous of Dr. Bagdusarian's time. But if there are other questions, we could get those in writing, and we'll share those with her. But we very much appreciate you shoehorning this into your day and into your week. Thank you very much. And our State Teacher of the Year, Owen Bondano, says, "Thank you for a great presentation."
Thank you all so much. Thank you for having me here today. And I'm happy to come back and talk anytime. Take care, everyone. Bye-bye.
Board, it is 1:55. The next agenda item is Presentation on Diversity in Literature and African-American Authors. The Michigan Department of Education staff will lead us through a presentation celebrating African-American History Month with literature. This is an informational presentation, does not require board action. Our presenters are Ms. Sheila Alice, Chief Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Paula Daniels, Director of the Office of Educational Support, and Dr. Brandy Buggne, Manager of the Literacy Unit. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Presenters, good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon, and thank you.
Good afternoon, thank you, Dr. Rice, and good afternoon to everyone. February marks the start of the month-long celebration of African-American history, a federally recognized celebration in which we show our respect and honor for the hard work of African-Americans and the sacrifices made by them. Students and staff in schools throughout Michigan and the country, they honor African-American History Month with Black history-themed programs and plays and songs and readings, and so very, very much more. The banner that you see on this slide is for a new initiative launched by MDE. We are thrilled to launch this in partnership with the Library of Michigan. It is titled, "Michigan Celebrates African-American History Month with Literature." This new and exciting initiative recognizes, celebrates, and honors outstanding African-American authors and their literary contributions by showcasing African-American authors and their literary works every week during the month of February. In early January, MDE and the Library of Michigan invited educators throughout the state to nominate African-American authors, their literary works in any genre, and the way or ways that the educator used that work with students. This forum provided an opportunity for educators to share their learning suggestions with their fellow educators. A nomination forum was developed by the department and communicated to the field. The response from educators was positive within a very quick turnaround timeframe. In little more than a week, educators submitted 143 nominations from 71 different traditional school districts, public school academies, non-public schools, and institutions. A small team of staff members from MDE and the Library of Michigan reviewed the nominations and selected 28 of them to showcase this month. Each week in February, we are releasing a week-long calendar of seven selected nominations, one for each day of the week. The first week began on Monday, February 1st, which is Langston Hughes' birthday. Mr. Hughes was an accomplished and prolific writer who provided a large body of poetic work, as well as plays and countless works of prose. The second week began Monday, February 8th, and runs through Sunday, February 14th. Week three is scheduled for release Friday of this week, and then week four the following week. Each calendar day provides two sets of details that have been provided by the nominator. This slide shows today's selection as an example of the details that are provided each day. The information on the left side of the slide showcases the literary work, which includes its title, the name of its author, the appropriate age of students with whom to use the work, the genre, the ISBN number for accessing the work, and some of the awards that the title has received. The second set of information is about the nominator, and that's located on the right side. It includes the educator's name, school, district or institution, and the way or ways in which the educator used or has used the work with students. Each week, we provide a memo to all educators in the state announcing the upcoming week-long schedule along with a link to the weekly calendar that is featured on MDE's Equity and Literacy webpage. So now I would like to introduce Dr. Paula Daniel to share a couple of the examples of the authors and the titles selected for inclusion during the two week-long calendars that we have released so far. Dr. Daniels?
Thank you, Sheila. Good afternoon, everyone. We are so very excited to be able to lift the works of some of our nation's most gifted and talented authors. and talented authors. And those that we are featuring are our authors of color and the literary works that they have created. It is my absolute pleasure to introduce you to two special authors. And what puts the Michigan cherry on top of these authors is that they are our very own Michigan homegrown authors. The first is Kelly J. Baptist, who was born and raised in Michigan. She's lived across the nation, but she found her way back home where she now serves as a social, emotional learning interventionist at the Arts and Communications Academy in Benton Harbor, Michigan, one of our Michigan educators. As a lover of writing, and as she shares it, she has been writing stories since she could write and hold a pencil. Kelly Baptist won the 2015 We Need Diverse Books Short Story Contest, and her winning entry is included in the Middle Grade Anthology, Flying Lessons, and Other Stories. A follow-up to that story, Isaiah Dunn Is My Hero, was released in August 2020 and was a featured work for our list. Isaiah Dunn Is My Hero is also the featured selection in her follow-up anthology. In addition to writing and teaching, Kelly Baptist is the proud mother of five children. She encourages mentors and helps all of her children cultivate an appreciation for reading and writing. In her words, "It is safe to say my life is full of stories and kids." We are pleased to feature our Michigan author, Kelly Baptist. The second Michigan author is Flint native Christopher Paul Curtis, who received his K-12 education in the Flint Public School District. After graduating from high school, Mr. Curtis pursued a love of theater and became a member of the Lansing-based theatrical music group called Suitcase Theater. That group has performed around the United States and Europe. Mr. Curtis also attended and graduated from the University of Michigan in Flint. He took a series of modest and low-paying jobs before pursuing his life passion when he started his writing career in earnest. He started writing children's books, his first love, publishing his first book in 1995. Many of his books are set in Flint. In 2000, he became the first African-American man to win the Newberry Medal for Writing. Two of his works include the Newberry Medal-winning book Bud Not Buddy, which is another work we are featuring this month. The Watsons Go to Birmingham, which was adapted for the TV movie of the same name on the Hallmark Channel, is another one of his celebrated works. We thank these esteemed Michigan authors, and in closing, I say, Mrs. Baptist, Mr. Curtis, we salute you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Daniels, for showcasing two of Michigan's amazing African-American authors who were featured these first two weeks of February. One of the most important ways to improve student literacy is to increase student engagement with literature. Student engagement increases in part as students see themselves in their literature. While reading, there is a power to children seeing themselves, mirrors, seeing others, windows, and entering the world presented in the literature, sliding glass doors. In this short YouTube video, Dr. Rudine Sims Bishop explains the terms mirrors, windows, and sliding glass doors.
We need diverse books because we need books in which children can find themselves, see reflections of themselves. I wrote a piece, maybe 1990 it was published, which I called Mirrors, Windows, and Sliding Glass Doors. And I think that's really why. Children need to see themselves reflected, but books can also be windows. And so you can look through and see other worlds and see how they match up or don't match up to your own, but the sliding glass door allows you to enter that world as well. And so that's the reason that the diversity needs to go both ways. And it's not just children who have been underrepresented and marginalized who need these books. It's also the children who always find their mirrors in the books and therefore get an exaggerated sense of their own self-worth and a false sense of what the world is like because it's becoming more and more colorful and diverse as time goes on. So I think that's why.
Improving student engagement in literature, along with the new initiative, Michigan Celebrates African-American History Month with Literature, supports the goal to improve early literacy achievement, which is included in our state strategic education plan. You see that goal highlighted on this slide. To share a little bit more about this topic, I would like to introduce Dr. Brandy Bougni. Dr. Bougni?
Thank you, Sheila. Yeah, so one of the major goals that Michigan Department of Education is working on to improve early literacy achievement is to increase student engagement. And we just heard Dr. Rudine Sims Bishop, in her very calming voice, explain to us that student engagement can be increased when students see themselves in the literature they're reading and they see others in that literature. So in addition to increasing student engagement, MDE is also supporting messages around improving the amount of time students spend reading and improving and increasing the amount of diverse literature used in instruction and also available for students to read individually. So I'm going to talk about three efforts that we're working on right now, really briefly, these few minutes, and then we'll come back and march at the State Board meeting and share more in depth. So three efforts include, first of all, we have produced a document called Celebrating Authors of Color and Their Works of Literature, and this is available on our website. Secondly, MDE is really excited to offer a free literacy conference on the morning of February 25th. It's called Building Mirrors and Windows: Children Seeing Themselves and Others in the Literature That We Teach. And you can register for this for free using the link that's on the screen, or we can also add that link in the chat box. And then thirdly, MDE in January produced and included on our website the document, Equity and Literacy Guidance, and you can find that online. So those are just a brief introduction of some of the efforts around improving early literacy achievement towards that goal of our state education plan. And again, at the March State Board of Education meeting, we'll dive more deeply into those efforts and others. So with that, Sheila, presentation back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Bougni, and we look forward to hearing more about these three efforts next month at the March State Board of Education meeting. I would like to acknowledge Randy Riley, the State Librarian and the Library of Michigan staff, for partnering with MDE on this month-long celebration of African-American authors and their literature. I'd also like to thank the educators who accepted the invitation and submitted nominations for Michigan Celebrates African-American History Month with Literature. It's their interest in submissions that were instrumental to the success of this new initiative to recognize African-American authors, to celebrate and raise up their literary works, to provide educators with an opportunity to share with other educators, and to expand the use of diverse literature in classrooms across the state. The 28 titles and authors showcased during this month provide only a snapshot of the volume of literary works by an expansive number of African-American authors. It is our hope and our desire that educators continue to use and recognize African-American authors and to showcase their literature in classrooms throughout the school year to create conditions for greater engagement with literature among Michigan students. Thank you so much for our presentation today. And Dr. Rice, I will pivot this presentation to you.
Thank you very much, Sheila, Dr. Daniels, Dr. Bougni. You make a good point. It is a substantial literary volume, pun intended. And our children need to read from the fullest range of diversity within literature, a range of literature that mirrors their very diversity in backgrounds and reflections and dreams and thoughts and the like. And so we appreciate your work in this area. More to share with the board coming up soon. Board members, do you have anything to ask or to share? I saw that Dr. Pugh loved Bud Not Buddy. There you go. That's an endorsement. And at least one of us is a Langston Hughes fan. Ms. Lipton?
Yes, thank you so much. This was a great presentation. And one of the pieces that I particularly applaud is the ability of the educator to not just state the book or the work, but also a little blurb in terms of how they use it. Because I do think that sometimes modeling can be very, very helpful. What I would also think that you might be looking to in the future is not just literature, but also ways in which students can, to engage in literacy activities in terms of reciting poetry, poetry slams. And I'm thinking about the new poet laureate that we were able to see on display at the inauguration and also at the Super Bowl. And I think that on the issue of mirroring, there's nothing more powerful than a young person to be able to see another young person use language in a way that certainly is not only a mirror, but also a window and a sliding glass door in terms of the possibilities for our young students.
Thank you very much for that, Ms. Lipton. That young poet laureate, Amanda Gorman, who did it up at the inauguration, made a lot of us proud. I note that President Albridge writes in the chat, "This is great." Thank you very much. Ms. Tilly, and then Dr. Pritchett.
Thank you. You know, when I was a brand-new board member, one of the things that I was concerned about was that we were not doing anything for Black History Month, and that was one of the things that I kind of pushed behind the scenes. So I'm really happy about this. It was a great presentation, well-thought-out. I am very appreciative for it, and I just want to say, great job to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Dr. Pritchett?
Thank you, and I want to echo my thanks also. And in particular, I'm keeping a copy of the recommendations from teachers from around Michigan each week because I'm always looking for appropriate literature to share with two special little girls, one's not so little anymore, and other children. So I appreciate that. So that's going in my file of go-to, but very informative presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Pugh?
And I just want to piggyback on what my fellow board members have said. This was a great presentation, and I look forward to catching up on the reading. I also, I really enjoyed The Watsons Goes to Birmingham. Read the book, I think I read the book first and then realized that it was a local author. So that's a great book and look forward to catching up on the reading and keeping up with you all. But thanks for the work.
Thank you very much. Owen Bondano has written in the chat, "The Watsons Go to Birmingham Changed My Life in Elementary School." There you go. That's a recommendation and an endorsement, all rolled into one. Other reflections from board members, comments or questions? Okay, we'll keep this space open. We do think that there's a value to continuing the conversation about diversity in literature. It's not a, it's a relatively recent theme. Our children's literature is markedly more diverse than it was 10 years ago, 15 years ago, 20 years ago, and it provides us with a lot of opportunities in schools and in classrooms to engage children, to excite children, to get children reading more and better. And the more our children read, all else being equal, the more that they improve their vocabularies, their background knowledge, their fluency, and you get that sort of upward spiral in literacy levels. This is truly the way we ought to be doing it with respect to literacy training. We ought to be exciting our children with what they read, not pummeling our children in their literacy work, but exciting them and engaging them and connecting them to their interests through literature. And there's so many ways to do it. But diversity in literature is one very, very important way, particularly for a state that is, as Dr. Rudine Sims Bishop noted, she noted for the country, I'm noting for the state, increasingly diverse. I think her expression was increasingly colorful. And it is an increasingly diverse state and country, and that deserves recognition in all that we do. So I want to thank our esteemed presenters, Sheila Alice, Dr. Paula Daniels, Dr. Brandy Bougni. Thank you so much. You have a wonderful day, and you will be back for the Late Show in March.
We will. Looking forward to it. Thank you, Dr. Rice.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is the approval of minutes of regular and committee of the whole meeting of January 12th, 2021. Please have a motion to approve the minutes. So I've got a finger up from our board president. I do not think that's a Statue of Liberty imitation. Dr. Albridge?
I would like to add a sentence to the, and I'm not sure if I do this before we make the motion or after.
I, you know, I think with forbearance, it doesn't matter. Why don't we put it on the table and then move to amend? Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. I have a motion and a second discussion. Dr. Albridge, to you.
Yes, so on page eight, the last paragraph under my comments from last month would seem to suggest, as they are written, that I was making a comment about January 6, 2021 at the Capitol where I was suggesting that this was simply an exercise in First Amendment. That was not the comment that I was making. So I would like to request that we add a sentence after the sentence that she said the best and worst were seen. I would like to add, "Dr. Albridge unequivocally condemned the violence at the U.S. Capitol."
Did you say that?
Yeah, I made a whole speech about it.
Okay, so let's initially try this informally. Is there any objection to the friendly amendment to the meeting minutes? Hearing none. We'll vote on the meeting minutes with the proposed amendment. Marilyn, if you could do a roll call vote, please, given... Marilyn, if you could do a roll call vote, please, given our remote status.
Lipton?
Yes.
Betty, yes? McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strahan?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Marilyn. We are at the point in our agenda where we hear a report from our president, Dr. Albridge.
Thank you. So first of all, I wanted to just thank again the superintendent and the Department of Education for the State Summit of Assessment waiver being sent to the U.S. Department of Education. I agree that there are twofold reasons for this. Actually, there's more than that, but we'll just say two for now. The first being that these tests will provide little valid and reliable information for parents and educators. And the second being that schools are already doing pre- and post-test this year, which will provide information that can actually help with instruction, which I think is the most important part of doing assessments. So I am fully supportive of this move. I wanted to also mention, at our last board meeting, we talked about updating the bylaws. And Ms. Snyder had a request, and I want to follow up on that. So as you'll notice from the minutes from the last meeting, the request to amend the bylaws to include online access to meetings by board members, presenters, or for the general public. So for board members, we did reach out to the Attorney General's office. And so I wanted to give an update. Public Act 254 of 2020, which currently pertains to the Open Meetings Act, does indicate that before March 31, 2021, anyone can participate virtually, including us as a board, as well as the public and MDE staff. On or after March 31 through December 31 of this year, virtual participation is allowed for active military duty, anyone with a medical condition, or statewide or local state of emergency or state of disaster. And then after December 31 of this year, virtual participation is allowed for active military duty only, and all others must be physically present at the meeting. Of course, this is subject to change. Once again, it's already changed a couple times. So we are going to closely monitor this, as you know, to make sure that we are adhering to the Open Meetings Act. For the general public, I did review the bylaws, and there is a very large section that talks about public participation. But I didn't see anything that mandates a member of the public provide comments, quote, "in person." And I vaguely recall that we may have received public comments in the past by phone, although I will admit, I don't remember what the circumstances might have been for that. So in my opinion, I don't think we necessarily need to change the bylaws. I think we, as a board, just need to agree if this is something that we want to do. However, if there is a desire to codify this into the bylaws, any member can certainly make this request and present it to the board at one meeting, and then we can vote it on it at the next meeting. But I'm going to say personally, I'm not sure that we necessarily need to do that. But, you know, I leave it up to the board to decide what you want to do. So that is just an update on where we are with that request. And I think that's it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Albridge. Next portion of the report of the meeting is the report from the superintendent. I feel like I've gotten my oar in the water sufficiently to date. We'll pivot to the report of the Michigan Teacher of the Year. Mr. Owen Bondano, the 2021 Michigan Teacher of the Year, will present his report. Mr. Bondano is an English Language Arts teacher, as previously introduced, at the Oak Park Freshman Institute in Oak Park Schools. Mrs. Chelsea Schram joins us today. She's the Region Six Teacher of the Year. She's joining us from Morris Area Schools. She's an elementary teacher at Morris Elementary School. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Teacher leaders, good afternoon. Welcome.
Good afternoon. As stated, my name is Owen Bondano. Give me just one moment. I'm sorry, my team appears to be.
Take your time. Owen, you have frozen. Feel like it's a Disney production. Owen, if you can hear me, you may want to click off and click back on.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, of course, as soon as I tried to share my slides, my entire team's application froze and collapsed. So I'm back now. My apologies. Let me share slides now. Hopefully it works this time. Everyone cross your fingers. Okay, I think you can see me now. I think we're cooking with gas, as my mother would say. As you know, my name is Owen Bondano. I'm the Michigan Teacher of the Year, and I'll be joined in just a few minutes by Chelsea Schram, the Region Six Michigan Teacher of the Year. So first of all, some notes, things happening in my district. As you know, my presentations are a little different from how many of the Michigan Teacher of the Year presentations have gone because I cannot travel around the state learning things from other buildings that are currently in session. Instead, I'm giving you sort of a look at what is going on with my own experience and in my own practice at this time. So in my own district, we have been, at Oak Park Schools, we've been a bit more on the conservative end as far as reopening is concerned. So we have been doing nothing but virtual all year so far. This has been for a lot of reasons. We've got some unique variables at Oak Park School District. For example, we are a small district, relatively speaking. We've got about 4,000 students total. But those 4,000 students come from 100 different zip codes. So we've got some geographical vulnerability, especially when it comes to outbreaks and spikes. And of course, we have a high number of teachers that come from many different cities, which adds to that geographical vulnerability. Our current plan that was discussed just last night at our board meeting is that all students will have the option of in-person if it's something that they and their families decide they want to do on April 5. So we're not meeting the deadline set by the governor, but we're doing it as fast as we safely can. This includes time to get those safety measures in place, make sure everyone's going to be safe. And also, it aligns with our return from spring break. And it's been a challenge, as I think everyone here knows, for educators to get the vaccine, if that's something that they want to do. So this also gives a little bit more lead time for those who want to be vaccinated to become vaccinated. So as you know, I get the opportunity to do a lot of amazing things because of this position. And this month is Love Teaching Month, it being February. So I wanted to sort of zoom in on one particular opportunity that I was given. Like I said, I get a lot of them, but recently, one of the things that I've been able to do, and one of the things I've found that I love to do, I didn't know before that I loved it, but I know now, is being able to give PD to other educators, especially around creating safe spaces for LGBTQ+ students in schools. It turns out I really like doing that. And recently, I've been able to pair with the Michigan Department of Education's LGBTQ+ Students Project to give some of those trainings, which has been really, really fun. So in thinking about why I love to be a teacher and why I love doing this work, I wanted to share some feedback I got from a recent training that was sent to me by email. This person reached out to me by email. And I just want to read like a real quick couple of sentences from their email because I think it truly embodies why I love teaching, and it is Love Teaching Month. So from this email, it says, "Thank you for being out and proud and working so hard to make the world better for trans folks. I am also trans, but I've only come to accept it later in life. In the 80s, I didn't even have the language to understand who I was and what I was experiencing, and I ended up in a very dark place. I've literally never met another trans teacher ever. This being my 27th year of teaching, I was sort of planning on not coming out to the rest of the staff and students or transitioning until after I'd retired. But the simple fact that you exist means doing it sooner is a future compatible with reality." So let me take a moment here to say thank you. This is from me now, not reading from the email. I wanted to take a moment to say thank you for being given this opportunity to do the amazing things that I get to do in this position and to be my authentic self because the Department of Education allows me to do that. So I wanted to say thank you for that and because of how much I love doing what I get to do right now. Change slide, please. There we go. Lastly, learning in a pandemic. We've had a lot of conversation today. We've heard a lot of opinions today about timelines for reopening, safety for reopening. I'm excited that I'll be getting back to my students. That doesn't mean I'm not also nervous about what the outcome to that might be. I do think that we're taking the necessary precautions, and I feel confident in going back, although our plan has not yet fully developed, so that I have many unanswered questions. But I have faith that the leadership in my district is doing what they need to do to answer those questions and get us to that good place. That being said, so my district administers the NWMAP test three times a year. We've just finished our second testing of the year, so we have some data now that we can compare from the fall until now. And just with that preliminary data, you know, there's been some nervousness around this virtual teaching that it will mean that our students are falling behind, that they're not being adequately educated. And so I just wanted to share that just my students, their reading scores for NWMAP, that currently, we have reached, we are showing 227% of our projected growth being met on average across all of my students. So we have grown 227% of what we are expected to grow between fall and winter in those tests. And this is not a growth that has been adjusted for pandemic. You know, expectations haven't been lowered in any way. This is based on the measurements that the NWMAP always uses. So it's challenging, and it's difficult to teach in this setting. We all know that. But I wanted to share that teachers are teaching and students are learning. That being said, I'd like to introduce Chelsea Schram from Region Six. Go ahead and take that away, Chelsea.
Hi, everyone. I'm Chelsea Schram. I actually teach at Langsberg Elementary. I made a switch at the beginning of the school year. I teach second grade there. You can go to the next page on. All right, I'm going to tell you a little bit about myself and then my goals, and then what I'm doing to reach my goals. The first picture there, we had some really exciting news that we were able to share with our family at Christmas. I am expecting, well, my husband and I are expecting our first child. And I think it can tell I'm super nervous because it's bouncing around in my belly right now. I am an avid outdoorsman. My husband and I hunt. We have hunting dogs. I'm also a beekeeper. And I like to use the honey to bake different gluten-free things. And all of those aspects of my life keep finding their way into the classroom. I keep telling myself, I need a hobby that's not school-related, and then I just make that connection again. All right, go ahead, Owen. So going into this school year, I had three goals with my region. I really wanted to improve our mathematical instruction. There's been a lot of focus on literacy, and that's the conversation across the board anytime you have a staff meeting. But I have spent the last six years of my teaching career, this is my seventh year total. I've spent the last six years of my teaching career really diving into math instruction and figuring out like, where are the holes, why are there holes, and what can I do as an educator? So I wanted to take my knowledge and share that with my region. I also wanted to find a way to pay for this because I know literacy is at the forefront of everyone's mind. And a lot of times, we don't have the money for the math professional development. So how can I work with community partners to find funding for these necessary trainings? And then my last goal, being a young teacher, is recruitment and retention of teachers because I know how stressful, before the pandemic even happened, how stressful education is. And, you know, all of this great work is really frustrating if we can't keep the teachers around. All righty, so go ahead, Owen. We'll get into what I'm doing to reach my goals, hopefully. All right, so there was a group of teachers in my region that we had been talking back and forth about what we could do to help during all of these virtual times. And I had attended a bunch of the panels along with Owen. We talked with the different universities. We did the anti-bullying. And all of those panels were amazing, but what I kept thinking after all of them was, I can do this. I can put on one of these panels to reach teachers from anywhere, so why am I not? So I grabbed these teachers in the region, and we have been hosting math panel discussions. And our intent was to keep it to mid-Michigan, but it has spread across the state. And we actually even have some intern teachers from the University of Alabama in Huntsville. Not really sure how they heard about us, but they've been attending our evening PDs. And some of our goals with that is just how we can make math more meaningful in the classroom, how we can use a lot of the resources that the MDE is already putting out in conjunction with Math Recovery and all the resources that these MySTEM networks are putting out. So we're not necessarily creating new content, but we're finding the content that already exists and helping teachers implement that in our classroom. One of our other goals is how can we make the math learning that's happening in schools visible for parents to see? Because that has been a big frustration for a lot of elementary school teachers is we hear about this new math, the Common Core new math. Well, it's not new. It's just presented differently. And if the parents can see that, then they can start to understand it. So some of these pictures up above are just ways that we're connecting with parents. And, you know, all of the virtual setting is made a little more complicated, but we are problem-solving through that. And one of the ways that we are helping with retention is we are creating, we're calling them grab-and-go bags for small group instruction, that we are using some of the MySTEM grant that our region has to help teachers have materials that align with their curriculums for small group math instruction. That way, they're not having to go out, they're not having to take their own time to put these materials together. They can just grab it, do a small group, and we are supporting them through these evening professional developments, which I hope that we continue doing even once everything settles down because we have gotten such amazing feedback. Teachers love that they can, you know, sit on their couch at 7:00 at night and listen to us talk about math, have their glass of wine. They don't have to get a babysitter. It's just a really impactful way that's low-stressed to help them continue learning. And I think that is it.
Dr. Rice, you're muted.
You know what? That was a temporary gift for all in the virtual room. So I appreciate it, Owen, but I'm not sure everyone else does. The presentations of our teacher leaders, always very interesting, always very elucidating and provocative in different ways. Board members, any reflections from any of you? I noticed that Dr. Pugh and Ms. Tilly have given shout-outs in the chat to Owen. Thank you, and thank you for your bravery. We appreciate your voice. We appreciate all the voices of our diverse teaching force. They all deserve representation. Thank you. Other reflections from board members? Going once and twice, thrice, from Rice, Chelsea Schram, we are walking the walk with you. When is our expected due date?
July 6.
Okay, very good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Very exciting. Okay. Thank you to both of you. We appreciate it. We appreciate you. Our next item on today's agenda is the state and federal legislative update. Mr. Martin Ackley, Director of the Office of Public and Governmental Affairs, will begin this presentation. Then we will pivot over to Ms. Lipton, our chairperson. And finally, Dr. Pritchett, if she has a National Association of State Boards of Education report. And at the end of this section, we'll pivot to Ms. Snyder's recommendation. So, Mr. Ackley, we begin with you. Mr. Ackley, you are like I was on mute.
They're not so much a gift. So thank you, Dr. Rice. I'll start again. As everyone I think knows, the legislature is back in session. The House and Senate Education Committees have been meeting jointly, as Dr. Rice mentioned earlier this morning. He testified last week to a joint Senate and House Education Committee on the returning to the classroom. And then the same joint committee met this morning, and they had
And then the same joint committee met this morning and they had DHHS Director Elizabeth Hertel and Dr. Begdasarian on to talk about returning to sports. So they've been meeting jointly the last two weeks. And then, so that's their mode right now to fact-find and to get joint information. The governor's executive budget will be released this Thursday at another joint Senate and House Appropriations Subcommittee meeting. That's at 11:00 a.m. and we will get you that information when that comes out. As Dr. Rice also mentioned this morning, a lot of the discussion is on the supplemental COVID relief funding. The governor has issued or has presented her ideas for how to spend that money and the House Republicans have come out with their own plan. They passed that plan last week and it's now in the Senate. There is, we've heard no discussion as to how soon they plan on doing that. We expect possibly this week, but we have not verified that. There are some differences in how the money would be spent on the education side in that package. And there's another, the one key difference is the House package tie bars, their funding bill to a House bill that would not take effect until House Bill 4049 was enacted. Now that would restrict the Director of DHHS from closing a public or non-public schools to in-person instruction or prohibiting a qualified sporting event. And so we think that if that gets to the whole process, if that tie bar continues, that would be an obstacle, I think, for the governor. I think she has actually voiced that opposition. There's also a strange, not strange, I guess, it's a section in another of the COVID bills that would possibly be an obstruction for the governor. It would require that recipients of COVID vaccines administered from the appropriations of the law be informed that utilization of aborted fetal tissue or human embryonic stem cell derivation lines in development of the COVID vaccine. So if that gets passed also in that bill, then 4019, I think, is that House bill, then that also could be an obstacle. So like Dr. Rice mentioned this morning, I think it is incumbent upon the legislature and the governor to work together to find a quick solution, not today, but like Dr. Rice said this morning, soon, because districts need to know how to budget for next year, for this school year and the next school year too. And that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Ackley. Board members, any questions or comments for Mr. Ackley before we pivot to Ms. Lipton?
I have a second.
Okay, Ms. Snyder. Yep.
So Marty, you said that Governor Whitmer is, what was the temperature on the DHHS tie?
There are, the would require, hold on, let me find that again. It would require, it's tie barred to another bill that would, let me see. No, I'll find it. Oh, it tie bars it to another bill that would not, so the funding would not take effect, the supplemental funding would not take effect unless that bill is enacted. And that would restrict the Director of DHHS from closing a public or non-public school to in-person instruction or prohibiting a qualified sporting event during an epidemic involving coronavirus. The bill would permit a local health officer to close a public or non-public school to in-person instruction or prohibit a qualified sporting event if certain criteria are met. So it puts the authority on the local public health official and not the Director of the State Department of Health and Human Services.
And two things, so it's specific to coronavirus, not to say, you know, if we were to deal with another type of virus or some other type of pandemic? And second, does it define the local public entity?
Local public health department, local health officer.
Which is still DHHS, just a public health officer, is local to that school district? So like, you know, in a given county, it would be that county's health department. It could be unique, not necessarily Michigan Department of Health and Human Services.
Yeah, and there are some areas of the state where multiple counties share health officers.
Okay. And you said yes, that my interpretation of it being coronavirus-specific is correct?
Yeah, yeah. The bill would add four criteria that must be met for local health department to close schools. Confirmed local coronavirus cases above 55 per million during, within a 14-day period. Percentage of local positive coronavirus tests above 10% within a 14-day period. Surge capacity below 20% in admissions or patient transfers for each local health facility and coronavirus local hospitalizations increased by 25% or more within a 14-day period. Those are the criteria.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Snyder. Dr. Pugh, a comment?
I don't know why I'm having problems with mute today. Just to your point, Marty, and the question that Nikki had and decentralized, the push to decentralized move from DHHS to have this scattered across the counties as far as decisions are made, you know, I think that part of the issue that I would have with that is that what I've seen working at local health departments and working at the local level, a lot of times when those decisions are made, they're controlled by local commissioners and the decisions are not well-informed, definitely not informed by science. And of course, we would think that that would be the push behind that.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Other comments or questions from state board members? Looking around, seeing and hearing none and giving one more pass. All right, Ms. Ackley, thank you very much. Ms. Lipton, to you.
Yes, thank you. I will just expand on some of the comments that Mr. Ackley made. As you all know, this is a new position for me and I will be interested in hearing from you all what would be most helpful. The committee unfortunately did not have an opportunity to meet before today because we are still trying to work out the details of our schedules and when we can meet. We will be finalizing that hopefully shortly. So what I've put together is what I hope will be helpful to this body. And then you can all let me know if that was the case. As Mr. Ackley said, the House Education Committee, their standing published time will be on Tuesdays at 9:00 a.m. The Senate Education and Career Readiness Committee, their standing time will be Tuesdays at noon. Although, as is common for efficiency, during these opening weeks of a new legislature where we've got new members and new committees, oftentimes the committees that have like interests on the House and Senate side will meet jointly and they have done that for the past two weeks, on Tuesdays at noon, using the Senate time. The Chair of the House Education Committee is Pamela Hornberger. The Majority Vice Chair is Brad Paquette. And the Minority Vice Chair is Darren Camilleri. On the Senate Education and Career Readiness Committee, the Chair is Lana Tice, Majority Vice Chair Ken Horn, and the Minority Vice Chair Dana Polahonky. And I would encourage the members to look at the full list of the committees because, again, a lot of this is about establishing relationships. In terms of some bills on the Senate side that have been introduced, the committee has only voted out one resolution by Dale Zorn, which was a resolution to encourage the governor to have a rapid return to sports. That was voted on and reported out on the second, I believe. But as of right now, there are bills just sitting in the committee and it looks like at least in the immediate future, they're going to be having what we would call overviews, again, to get members of the committees sort of situated in the subject matter of their committee. And it doesn't look like they will be taking up any specific bills yet. And that's probably, that's pretty common and that probably won't happen until next month. But I did want to just point out a couple of bills that I thought would be of interest. And of course, more will follow and we know that there's going to be hearings. But bills on the Senate side that I thought were interesting to this body, beginning in numerical order, Senate Bill 56 and its companion bill, it's tie barred to Senate Bill 57. And for those who may not know, a tie bar means a bill that they have to go in tandem. So if one bill passes, it drags the other one along or if one doesn't pass, then the other one doesn't pass unless the tie bar is broken. So Senate Bill 56 and 57, both, the primary sponsor is Ken Horn, who of course is on the committee. And it's basically dealing with the section in the school code dealing with teacher evaluations. And Senate Bill 56 strikes the sections which uses evidence of student growth as the predominant factor. And it strikes the application of a collective bargaining agreement that would prevent these evaluations from taking place. Tie barred to Senate Bill 57, which strikes the section that would have increased the percentage of student assessment data contributing to teacher evaluations from 25 to 40%. Some of you may recall back, at least when I was in the legislature, that that teacher evaluation legislation was passed. And this year, I believe in the 2019-20 school year, the percentage of student growth that would have contributed to the teacher evaluation would have risen to 40% and that section has been stricken in this particular bill. And then finally, there's also two bills, Senate Bill 68 and Senate Bill 69, introduced by Sean McCann. And it would expand the annual report that the school boards must submit currently under Section 1310A to include not only expelled students, but also suspended students, the number of pupils who are truant, chronically absent or disciplinary absences, and include a written description and breakdown by race, gender, and ethnicity. And it has a companion bill which includes an 11-member advisory board within the MDE that would aid in determining the criteria for excused absences. So those are the major bills that are in, that have been referred on the Senate side, on the Education Committee. On the House side, you'll bear with me, there are a few more. The House always does introduce a lot more bills on the Senate side for obvious reasons. And again, there were many more than I could go through, so I just picked ones that I thought would be most relevant to this body. House Bill 4032, which would keep the 25% requirement from test scores for teacher evaluation not going up to 40%, as I mentioned in the prior discussion. It is supposed to go up to 40% in 2019-20 and this bill would keep it at 25%, excuse me. It also eliminates the money for teacher training for evaluations, eliminates the funding reserve, I'm sorry, it eliminates the money for training evaluators that would have come from the teacher evaluation reserve fund, which was established in the teacher evaluation legislation back several years ago. And there's a companion bill that is the same for school administrators. House Bill 4037 is referred to the Appropriations Committee on School Aid, but it's interesting because it eliminates the requirement in the MME of the evaluation of workforce readiness. And the language in the bill says that the department shall not require as a condition of state aid, the administration by district of an assessment that evaluates workforce readiness. And, okay, so that is that bill. And then there's our House Bill 4042, which goes a little bit more broadly, which say, which states that districts don't have to administer tests this year in order to get state aid, specifically no PSAT test. And then lastly, I just wanted to give a little bit more detail on the school aid supplemental that has been referred to. It's the CARES Act dollars, it's House Bill 4048. And it would appropriate 90 million for summer programs, 22.35 million for before and after school programs, 45 million for credit recovery. And it designates a March 15, 2020 deadline for school districts to apply for these dollars. So these are just a highlight of bills that have been introduced in the respective committees. And I hope that that gives you a little taste of what's out there. And in the coming months, we will be giving you some more information about what hearings have been scheduled on what bills.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Dr. Pugh and Dr. Albridge.
Actually, I was going to ask you about one of the bills, but then there were multiple that I have questions about, Ellen, and I'm just wondering if you can send us that synopsis, if you have that in a way that we could take a look at it? That would be great. And then I don't know if you or Marty talked about the governor's budget that should be released this week and if there's any thoughts on what should be in that. I might have missed that.
The governor's budget is due to be released on Thursday and there is nothing public yet on that budget. Brandy, do you have anything to add to that?
I didn't know you were there, Brandy, sorry.
No, it's okay, I was off camera. There, I do believe that there will be some information provided tomorrow morning as a preview of what will be more fully described and introduced on Thursday. So we are previewing some education items tomorrow, so I would expect that you'll all see that tomorrow. And I'm happy to send along some notes or have a conversation this evening or early tomorrow morning with Dr. Rice and President Albrecht.
So what's in it? No, I'm just joking.
I don't want my comms director to get so mad at me.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Pugh and Ms. Johnson. Dr. Albridge?
I'm all set.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Lipton, thank you. Moving forward, NASB presentation, National Association of School Boards of Education presentation. Dr. Pritchett, do you have anything to share with us today?
Just a couple of items of information, which some of you may have already read because you're probably getting the same information I am. First of all, Dr. Robert Hall, who is the President and CEO of NASB, is retiring, but that's effective December 31, so Board of Directors, I think, will be setting up their process to... to replace him. Date, you may want to make a note of March 22 and 23. They, NASB will be sponsoring their legislative conference. Obviously, it will all be virtual. They have not posted yet any registration information. Once they do, I will forward that in case it happens between meetings. The good news is they probably don't have any cap on how many people can actually register. So I was able to listen in on part of their legislative office hours last Wednesday. And one of the takeaways I had is that NASB is being very, very careful about taking a stance on the waivers for the assessments because they know each state is in a different place on that. They are making a statement. They, they do believe that assessments such as benchmark assessments, if that's what a state determines is best for their students at that point, are important. And we do need to have a sense of where our students are right now academically. They recognize the fact that teachers do that on a daily basis for the most part. But again, if a state does decide either not to apply for that waiver or a state decides they're going to go ahead and move forward with their state assessments, that obviously NASB is not going to get in the middle of that. So that was a takeaway I took from the meeting last Wednesday. Those phone-in meetings are an hour long. They're every Wednesday, first Wednesday of the month, from what I can tell from their calendar. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pritchett. Any, any questions or comments for Dr. Pritchett? Once and twice, anything nice?
Dr. Rice, the only thing I'll, I'll say is that I've had the opportunity to at least attend the last open hours with the CDC and ask some pointed questions of there as it relates to in-person schools and safe return to school. And so, you know, as those in-person, or as those open hours are presented, those are really great sessions as we look to these conversations and these decisions that are being made. Also, there is the Council of Foreign Affairs that has some really good sessions as well and great presenters.
Good. Thank you very much, Dr. Pugh. Any other questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, let's pivot to Ms. Snyder and the resolution that she asked that we consider as part of today's agenda, Ms. Snyder, to you. And if you wouldn't mind, if you'd be kind enough to read into the record the resolution, please?
I can do that. And I can also actually, I'm looking at copying and pasting it into... Let's see if I can copy and paste it into comments.
Well, Dr. Rice, I have a question while that's being done.
Yes.
In the, the motion that was made today, I, we're not voting on a resolution today, correct?
Well, it's a question. I mean, I think that the, the board, Ms. Snyder asked for this to be on the agenda. She asked for it to be considered. There was a vote to include it on to the, on the agenda for discussion. The board can determine whether it would like to vote on it or not. But you, you voted earlier in the meeting to give it a space at the meeting. It's, it's in the legislative update. And so really, the question becomes, once she reads it into the record, if someone wants to move it, if someone wants to second it, there will be discussion. And you'll make a determination of whether you, you vote on it, you don't, you table it, you don't, what you do with it at that point.
Okay, I'll hold my thoughts on, on the process and, and the questions until we're done.
Yeah, just like, I just like it to be read into the record, if we could, please, so that people who are listening are, are able to hear, preferably see as well, but, but minimally hear what we're reflecting upon. It would be ideal to do both because there are some people who have visual capability, some auditory, some both. And then, once, once there's an establishment of what Ms. Snyder's reflecting upon, then we go from there. Ms. Snyder, to you.
So I've tried to copy and paste it. And Teams is saying you'll need to shorten your message to send it. So that's not going to be possible. I did email it to everybody. So if you can pull that up, then we'll probably refer to it after I'm done reading it.
If you could, if you would be kind enough to send it to, to Martin Ackley, Marilyn Schneider, and to me, we'll make sure that someone can put it up on the screen for our viewing audience so that they, that they have the opportunity to see it as well.
I think there's a potential I can share it right now, actually.
Okay.
Right? Let's see. Is it being shared?
It is, yeah. We just need to expand it a little bit. But yes, it's there.
Okay, can I begin?
Yes, please.
Okay. So this is February 9, 2021, Resolution to Encourage Local Districts to Return to School. Whereas it is the responsibility of the State Board of Education to lead and provide general supervision over all public education, serving as the general planning and coordinating body for all public education. Whereas the State Board of Education shall advise the legislature as to the financial requirements in connection with the leadership, supervision, planning, and coordinating required of its body. Whereas Dr. Sean O'Leary, a pediatrics infectious disease specialist representing the American Academy of Pediatrics, guidelines strongly recommends that students be physically present in school. Districts that only offer remote learning or even hybrid learning increase the risk of further learning loss, abuse, and suicide. Whereas we know a lot more about the virus now, kids are less likely to catch and spread the infection. Whereas the unintended health, social, and educational risks to students in need not physically present for in-person instruction continue to be documented and significant. Whereas the metrics being used at many local district levels are not attainable nor science-based for a virus that we now have sufficient data to consider more thoroughly. Now therefore, be it resolved at the State Board of Ed, both takes the responsibility of local school districts in continuing to mitigate the spread of illness through reasonable precautions seriously, and urges local districts to adopt a return-to-school date and plan made available to parents and students. This is an imminent priority, even if that means replacing, at least temporarily, teachers who do not feel comfortable returning to school. And it is strongly recommended that the legislature incentivize local districts to return to in-person instruction. And then everything that follows for the next several pages are citations from professional bodies and organizations, the CDC, WHO, UNICEF, UNESCO, Dr. Fauci himself, and almost 400 physicians and mental health professionals that have signed on to acknowledging that students need to return to in-person instruction.
Okay, and this is, this is the, the letter that was sent to the board a day or two ago by the individuals from Ann Arbor, is that correct?
Correct. Actually, I, I think there's a potential that there's been quite a few emails sent on behalf of Ann Arbor Reasonable Return, but this is the open letter that might be different from the other communications as well.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, so Ms. Snyder has read the proposed resolution into the record. Let's, let's do this properly, if we could. Could we have a, a motion to support the resolution for the purposes of discussion? So if we can get it on the table.
Nikki?
Hello?
Nikki, you want to... No, Nikki moves, Nikki, do you move it? And I'll second it?
Yes, I move to introduce the resolution.
Very good. Okay. And Mr. McMillan, do you second it?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second discussion. So we have Dr. Pugh, a question, and then Dr. Albridge, a comment.
I'll yield to, to President Albrecht, and then I'll, I'll come back around.
President Albridge, to you.
Okay. Thank you very much. So before I address the actual resolution, I, I do want to address the process. So generally, if you want to put something before the board and come to an agreement, I think it should be shared, if at all possible, before the board meeting. And I know that we've done this in the past, but I thought that we were trying to move away from this process, or this practice, I should say. So doing so would give us an opportunity to do our own research, to fact-check any declarative statements made in the resolution, and hopefully to have a product that we could debate and come to an agreement on at the board table. But getting a statement of this magnitude, especially with all of these additional items included in it, at lunchtime, I don't think lends itself to the level of work that needs to happen for something of this importance. And I'm also concerned that our agenda item was discussed as a resolution encouraging local districts to identify in-person learning opportunities and communicate such to local constituencies, which I would be absolutely in favor of. But I feel that this resolution goes well beyond that, including calling for teachers to be replaced, which I, I don't even know how we would do that and under, and who exactly... Sorry, I have two German Shepherds going at it right now. Who would do that? So my recommendation would be to amend the statement to simply read the following. The State Board of Education encourages local districts to offer safe, in-person learning opportunities consistent with state and federal guidelines, and to communicate such widely with their local constituencies. So outside of this, I'm afraid I would have to vote no on the proposed resolution because I don't feel that I've had the time to accurately reflect on it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, President Albrecht. Other board members, questions or comments? Dr. Pugh, back to you.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm happy that Cassandra, or President Albrecht spoke to the process. That was my first issue. And those were the questions that I was asking earlier this morning. And I just didn't think that we were jumping right in here because I've, I've had issues with trying to put before this board resolutions. And we decided to go in a different direction as far as putting resolutions on, on the floor to vote on. I thought that the conversation that we were going to have here was just the discussion of whether or not we, we would put a resolution together. And I didn't know that it would be that meaty of a, of a resolution that was already pinned. Of course, I have issue with the resolution. I have issue with us telling school districts to, to be ready to return to school by a certain date. So I, I would have issue, issue with that as well. And I, I really don't understand how we could do that, given the conversation that we had this, this morning. I do take into consideration the comments that were made today by a school district, Ann Arbor School District, which is quite different from quite a few school districts in our state. And while I don't want to down parents for wanting their children to go to school and those teachers who are ready to go back into classrooms, I do understand that the dynamics are so unique throughout this state that I would be concerned with giving any directions that, that are based upon a timeline versus making sure that we address the, the needs of these school environments, teachers getting vaccinated, studies that, that reflect and, and take into consideration the diverse nature of, of the student makeups of some of our, our school districts. So I have an issue with the process. I have an issue with the state, with the resolution as well.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Ms. Lipton? I beg your pardon. I, I think Dr. Pritchett was in the chat first. Dr. Pritchett, then Ms. Lipton, I beg your pardon.
Thank you. I just wanted to voice my support of the statement of Dr., that Dr. Albrecht has put forward. I have, from the beginning of the pandemic, been a proponent of flexibility for school districts of local control and encouraging, when asked, for school districts to seriously look at providing in-person instruction, providing hybrid instruction, providing remote instruction so that all of our children's needs can be met. I also strongly support the governor and support the Michigan Department of Health as they have made some decisions where school districts have had to adjust. I think the advantage of having that flexibility from the beginning has been that they can adjust and students and staff are able to adjust a little bit easier when they have more than one format or choice available to them. So it ultimately is the parent choice on how they believe their child's needs are being met. And so I think the statement that our president has come up with really encompasses all of that, for me anyways, my personal opinion. So I just wanted to voice my support for that.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Ms. Lipton, to you.
Yes, I just wanted to, I just wanted to know if Board Member Snyder was considering the amending the resolution to focus in on the, the date certain, which is, which is, I, I, I support that concept. I think that anything that we can do to help parents better understand what's going on in their unique district, I think, would be helpful. So I support the, 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 the concept, I think, of what Board Member Snyder, at least, initially remarked that, that she was going after. The, the specific language, I didn't get an email. I'd have to, I'd have to review it. And, and I would certainly want more time to, you know, to strike certain words or to, to massage certain things before I voted yes on it as it's on the floor.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lipton. We, we did have a, Mr. McMillan, you had a comment in the chat. Would you care to share that or not?
Oh, I, I just said that typically, in, I think Roberts rules, or maybe it's just generally, when somebody makes a motion, they speak to the motion first. And then, so you can get an understanding of, or everybody can get an understanding of why the motion's being made.
Fair, fair enough. And, and I, it's well, well, well noted. I thought, I thought we heard a fair bit of that this morning. But nonetheless, I think that's well, you know, it's a point well taken. Ms. Snyder, to you.
Thank you. I do appreciate that, although it doesn't hurt my feelings. I've taken some notes and definitely want back and forth on this and don't want to be perceived as someone who doesn't appreciate process or flexibility. So to, to that first point of process, the concept that I was operating under is really just trying to take in all of the communication we've had since our last Agenda Studying Committee, where people are in these school districts across the state of Michigan, because it's not just Ann Arbor. There's, we've heard from Grand Ledge, Rochester. Gosh, if we went back in our email, we could probably find at least a handful of districts with multiple people who are struggling. And that, that's probably just a very limited view of how much parents and kids are struggling right now, today. So that, that's why I presented it. That's why I would move to adopt a statement that we could edit together and get out, not next month, but this month. You know, it, it has a sense of urgency and importance that, you know, in the middle of a pandemic, I, I'm not really feeling to... Process isn't necessarily the most important part of something like this, I think. And sometimes, as public officials, we have to respond in that capacity. And, and Judy, to your point of flexibility, I really appreciate that. I just, I'm concerned at this point in time that even with all that flexibility, that we are still in the place that we're in, that we saw today with public comment, and that we continue to see in our, in our email box and with parents and, and kids. And you know, if, if the parents... And you know, if the parents really had an opportunity to show you the worst moments over the last 10 months, we probably wouldn't even be able to understand what they're saying, simply because when you're at home with your kids, homeschooling them, whether they're online learning, or you've taken them out of the public school system, or whatever your situation is right now, it's pretty dire at times. So I don't think it's at all out of our purview or out of our process in the middle of a pandemic, or our responsibility, and even within this flexibility, to make a statement now if we so choose to do that today. Pam, I just want to be careful when we say "one school district" because I would never want to offend one school district in the state of Michigan with my comments like that. And it's beyond one school district. This is almost 400 experts, medical experts, and mental health experts that are out there supporting, you know, one of our many school districts. And so that's a big statement to make. I would, I just, I feel for Ann Arbor School District the same way I feel for Detroit Public School District, Marquette Public School District, Dexter County School District, and whether it's Ann Arbor coming to the board, or it's Dexter, it's Marquette, or it's Detroit, it's my responsibility to honor the conversation in a timely way. So I feel really strongly about that. With all that said, that's why I introduced the motion. So my question is, do we agree to anything? And I know one thing that you mentioned, Cassandra, is to take out the teacher comment. I really do appreciate that. I want to make sure that that's not received as an offense. We did hear one of the parents talk about the difficulties in that today during public comment. My only purpose of including that would be to make sure that there are no barriers for people returning to in-person teaching. So, and again, I think there's room for us to wiggle and go through this together, incentivize local school districts. What might that look like? The legislature should, would really have to take that up. And maybe some of the things we've talked about today, like capital improvements and HVAC improvements, different things, can be brought into the conversation to incentivize school districts to go back to in-person learning. I still would say that this is on the table. If we want to officially, I could introduce an amendment for the teacher comment, whatever we need to kind of parse, we could do still, if that's of interest to anybody. So actually, Tom, I will move to replace, I'm sorry, strike that sentence and just say it is strongly recommended that the legislature incentivize local districts to return to in-person instruction, if you would second that.
Yeah, that's fine. If that's an appropriate way of viewing it, sure.
And, you know, I think the mover who's amending her own piece in a fashion, so I don't see any issues with that. So we have a slightly amended motion. It is seconded. More discussion on the motion. More discussion on the motion as amended. Dr. Pugh, is that a hand? Okay, go ahead, ma'am. No, you're doing the Michael Rice imitation, Dr. Pugh.
You always love that, too. So, you know, again, it was a total misrepresentation to me, what we discussed this morning and the questions that I asked that allowed, that helped us to get a unanimous vote to get this on the agenda. We had an AG's office opinion, I thought, or some guidance from the AG's office as to how we would address how we put, you know, have these discussions around legislative agenda items. You know, the very fact that we use the word incentivize when we're talking about trying to keep people alive, and these, I don't look at them as incentives. I look at these as lifesavers, the things that are, you know, make or break, death or not, the things that we're talking about. And, you know, we're going to talk about putting children back into classrooms, putting teachers back into classrooms, who then go back into the community, and we don't have, to me, we still don't have enough information about this. And we're talking about experts, and yes, I do listen to the experts, but I do also read what the limitations are and what the experts are saying. And I do think that there are limitations for certain populations, those populations that have been hardest hit, continue to be the hardest hit. At one time, we were saying that there were no masks, and we had a lot of parents, a lot of emails that were saying, hey, we want our kids in school and we don't want them to wear any mask to school. There was this thought that if you wiped everything down, that we were all good, and we weren't thinking about the airborneness. I was on a call where the CDC experts said, open some windows. Right now, we haven't really talked to the EPA, the EPA who has 25-plus years' experience in this area of air quality, but the CDC has not written their guidance, which is why the current administration has said that they still are waiting for that CDC guidance. I heard somebody reference the World Health Organization today that has not updated their guidance on the airborneness of disease since 1930. We heard today that there, in Flint, Michigan, there are schools that still don't have their water issues addressed, let alone the air quality issues addressed. I heard teachers should get vaccines, then I heard, no, teachers don't need vaccines before they go back into the classroom. So there are a lot of things that need to go into these two, three, four, or five-point sentences that we have here before we start telling people to go into the classrooms safe. And I think that, you know, Ann Arbor is who we heard today, and that's what I was referring to. And, you know, this has been a disease that has been an inconvenience for some, but it has definitely been genocide by default for others. There is just such this rush to get back to normalcy, and there is, you know, at the expense of so many populations that still don't have what we are calling incentives that are the very things that will save their lives. And when we talk about, when we flip this conversation and we start talking about, how do we get those things at all of these, the schools' disposals equally, then I can have the conversation about how we rush people to get back into the classroom. And I was the first person, one of the first people, I won't say first, that talked about the social and emotional well-being of children. We're trying to keep people alive. We're in a pandemic that I've never seen in my lifetime. I don't know anyone has ever seen in their lifetime. So that is the focus of a lot of people, is staying alive. And we haven't even talked about the fact that these next few months, that experts are also saying, will be some of the most critical months that we will experience.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. President Albrecht.
Thank you. And I just want to say, I do appreciate the elimination of the sentence that alluded to replacing teachers who do not want to go back into the classroom for various reasons, some of which might be that they have underlying health issues. And I would hope we wouldn't be suggesting, obviously, that any teacher with an underlying health issue should be replaced. So I really do appreciate the elimination of that sentence. But it doesn't address some of my larger concerns, if you will, about the overall document, first of all, including several pages of information that we really haven't had time to go into and really focus on and make sure that it's accurate information. It also, the statement includes a quote from a physician, and as far as I can tell, that quote dates back to June. And as we indicate in the statement, a lot has changed, and we know a lot more now. But one of the things that we also know is that there are now variants that are much more contagious, and they are in Michigan. And so as something I would want to do as my due diligence is go back and see, has this physician updated any of his recommendations? Has the academy updated any of their recommendations? I just haven't had time to do that. And so I don't feel comfortable approving something that includes language that may be completely outdated at this point, and using it as justification to not only encourage local districts to offer safe and in-person learning opportunities, but to actually call on the legislature to incentivize, which I think we know is a whole new process and can of worms. So I'll just go back to, I really appreciate the effort. I appreciate bringing it forward. I don't think I've had the time to be, to really be able to delve into the language of the resolution. And so if it remains this way, then I would have to vote no. And, but I reiterate again, I would support something that was very, very simple and speaks to where I think the majority of us are thinking, which is, we do believe that safe in-person learning opportunities consistent with state and federal guidelines are important, and we would like to see this happen. And to the original point that we, I think unanimously agreed to put this on the agenda, was that these things need to be communicated far and wide from local districts to their local constituencies. So I continue to have that position, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, President Albrecht. We have a motion, we have a second, we've had discussion. Is there more discussion on the lightly amended motion on the table?
I would just, the last thing I want to say, just because I know that we're talking about variants now with the virus. I don't know that that physician would go back and change his mind in his statement, only because the way viruses actually work is that when you have a new variant, you need a new vaccine for it. So we're already struggling to roll out what many people feel should be a prerequisite, which Brandy has talked about in the very beginning of the meeting, won't be a prerequisite to returning to school. So if we now consider the variant and being vaccinated for the variant, it's just not going to work. That's not, I mean, not to be sassy, but that's not how science works. So we have to consider what is really feasible based on how it actually works. So I just, you know, as we move forward and continue to talk about this, I feel like it just needs to be something that we urge, given actual facts and information, what's the best way we can actually mitigate it? And how do we get kids back into schools? Because ultimately, the passion, Pam, that you have, I have too, it may just be a different perspective. I think that learning loss, abuse, and suicide are just as important, and we need to make sure that as we consider what it looks like as a board to release statements that we're considering all things. So I wish we could release a statement to Michigan Public Schools today, but if that's not something we support, then I will defer.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Dr. Pugh, then to Dr. Albrecht. And hearing, if I hear no other requests, I'll sum up. I'm sorry, what did you say?
I have a comment also.
Very good, okay. So Dr. Pugh, Dr. Albrecht, Mr. McMillan, and any others who care to share. We're not abbreviating this conversation in any way, shape, or form. We're going to hear it out fully, we're going to flesh it out fully. Dr. Pugh, to you.
Nikki's last comment actually kind of answered where I was going to go with this, because I wanted to repeat where we were with the statement and then suggest that we give it some time, because, and I don't know where we are, because I would really like to unpack that word "safe" that's in Cassandra's, but I would like to give this some time. I would agree with Nikki's last, Board Member Nikki's last statement.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Pugh. Dr. Albrecht, Mr. McMillan.
Yeah, thank you. So I appreciate your comments, Nikki. I just want to reiterate, what I was suggesting is not that we have to wait until we have a vaccine for the new variants. What I was suggesting was, we're quoting an organization and a physician in a statement, and the quote itself is completely outdated, and neither of us know if it has changed or not. That's what I'm suggesting. If we want to include quotes like that, we need to make sure that they're the most up-to-date and accurate at the time that we do it. That's the only point I was trying to make.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Albrecht. Mr. McMillan.
I was going to speak to some of the particulars in the therefore be resolved, but if we're not going to vote on this, I guess we don't have to talk about it now. I just, I don't know if we can wait. I mean, they're supposed to have this done by March 1st. And we know, I mean, quite frankly, we know, not just in Ann Arbor, we hear, I've heard from superintendents that it's, you know, a lot of them, the teachers refuse to come back. And we've talked about, maybe there's ways to deal with that. You can have the ones that don't want to. Maybe they're vulnerable, maybe they're scared, I don't know. But they can maybe teach the kids online, because we know there's going to be a significant number that still want to stay home, I guess, or at least some. But, you know, I mean, but if they need to, I would hope the teachers would say, you know, for the betterment of the kids, if the kids are first, that, you know, if I don't want to come in and we need teachers in person, because we know in-person is best for so many kids, that I'll step aside for a little while. I mean, it was just temporarily, but I guess that got stricken. You know, I think the legislature incentivizing is not a new concept. I think a lot of, some districts, just like Ann Arbor, just refuse to do what is necessary and what's clearly the, you know, vast majority of states are doing. It's just here in Michigan, maybe it's leadership or whatever, there's just a refusal to. So it'd be good to have the legislature engaged, because right now, the governor kind of is issuing dictates and not really engaging the legislature. So I don't know. I just thought that it would be good.
Okay, so one more, thank you, Mr. McMillan, one more casting of the net for comments or questions before I sum up and make our determinations of next steps. Okay, so that being the case, just one point of clarification and then a structuring of the next step or steps. This is, my point earlier was that the statement was from Ann Arbor individuals, not that this is an issue that is localized to Ann Arbor. This is bigger than Ann Arbor, and we all know that. So just a clarification for the record, that the communication was from Ann Arbor. The issue is broader than Ann Arbor. Want to make clear for the listening public that we understand that as a collective. So that's the first piece. The second piece is, we have a motion and a second on the table. We've been discussing that motion. It is for a lightly amended resolution from Ms. Snyder. You have three choices. The first is to go ahead and vote on that resolution today. The second is to table the resolution and to reflect upon it in the coming weeks and to bring it back in some form or fashion, either the same or amended, and vote upon it next month. And the third possibility, which was noted in your chat, was from President Albrecht. It is a scaled-down version, keeping a portion of this. And again, you can all see the chat. President Albrecht, if you would like to read it, that's fine. If not, that's fine. Right now, we have a motion and a second. We have a particular item on the table. It would be up to you as voting board members to determine if you want to go ahead with this vote, to table it, or to offer a substitute, which would require a separate vote to substitute, and then a separate vote on the substitute. So I leave those reflections to you. I am simply chairing the action.
I prefer to obviously move it as it is and just vote.
Fair enough. Prerogative of the motion maker, hearing no objections from anyone else. Marilyn, if you would be kind enough to do a roll call vote, please. It is just a point of clarification, Ms. Snyder. It is the motion as lightly amended with the striking of the one sentence. Is that accurate? Very good, okay. Thank you so much. Marilyn, a roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
No.
McMillan?
Yeah.
Pritchett?
No.
Pugh?
No.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strayhorn? Strayhorn?
Mr. Strayhorn, we, we need, we, there you go. Thank you.
No? He said no?
He did, yes.
Okay. Tilly?
No.
Albridge?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you, Marilyn. Thank you, board members. We now come to that point in the agenda where it's comments from state board members. Would any board member like to make a comment? Comments from board members. There have been one or two this board meeting. People may be all commented out.
I, um, that was, I had the opportunity at the end of last month to speak at the national, I'm trying to pull it up, at a national conference that was focused on COVID, climate, and return to school. And there were several presenters, but it was attended by teachers, activists, parents, a great learning opportunity. And the speakers included former EPA Administrator Christine Whitman, as well as Randy Weingarten. One of the things that, that stood out to me, and I, and I had the opportunity to speak at the opening panel that was around equity, one of the things that stood out to me, as well as those, those who attended the second day of the event, was the comments by Randy Weingarten, who mentioned that she really would have, that she really wished that she would have listened around the, the air quality, the ventilation being so critical to how we reopen, and especially as it relates to our schools. Again, you know, there's a commercial where there's multiple stars and actors and singers that are talking about the seal that's on the outside of restaurants, that you want to look for to see if this building has addressed its air quality concerns. We need that for our children, and we need, that's where our voice needs to be. And when we have that type of passion, when we have the passion to make sure that the research that, that we're looking at, and we're going out, and repeating, and regurgitating, and using in defense of opening schools represents all the schools in the state and in this country. We started off with this disease illuminating and exacerbating the disparities that have long existed. Here we are with the vaccines. Black, brown, people of color cannot get the vaccine. Michigan, we don't have our, our vaccine rates by color, but the 20 states that are showing their vaccine rates by color, by the emails, texts that I've gotten today, by what I see, the messages that I get, people are not getting vaccinated. This disease is resonating in our, in our communities still. People are afraid, and rightfully so. And it's more than an inconvenience. There are lives being lost. I won't bore you like I usually do and give my rundown of friends and family members who have texted me and told me I felt like I was about to die. But, but that's the experience that we have, that I have, is that I experienced this personally, and may, and others probably do too. I want children in schools, just like everybody else does. I'm afraid. I'm afraid for this country. I'm afraid for this world, because if we cannot sit down and let this thing pass over, I'm afraid for where we will be. I'm afraid for our existence. I'm afraid beyond whether our children, there's this thing called learning loss, I'm afraid beyond that. I'm afraid for our existence. And I will leave it there.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Other, other reflections of board members? Hearing and seeing none. Board members, our future meeting dates are March 9th, April 13th, May 11th, and May 18th. They are all Tuesday mornings, they are all at 9:30. The first three are regular meetings. The fourth of the four is a work session. If there are any topics board members would like included in future meeting agendas, please notify Marilyn and, and me. Let the record show that it is 3:45 PM. We can't give you all the gifts that you deserve, but we are giving you a small gift of time this afternoon. Have a good day. Be well. Stay healthy, stay strong. Thank you. Bye, guys.